Hi, everyone. We're gonna open the meeting. It's um, yeah, but are the agendas in that normal spot there? So if you've seen the agenda, we have some um advertised uh meeting start times of eight o'clock, eight fifteen, eight thirty. We can't legally start those hearings until then. So we'll go into normally what we do minutes. We don't have any minutes. So we're gonna talk about the agreement for Grand Legacy Woodcutter, which is a thing in meetings being recorded. Which is the revised bond, I think. Danielle?
Um, yes, uh, normally we don't put these on the agenda, but I just wanted to bring to the CPC's attention that um we have a revised bond amount for the ongoing construction for Woodcutter, only because um as time has passed, we had GM to do another inspection for us and the costs of completion have risen a little bit. So the applicant was agreeable to putting additional funds into their um their bond. And so we just, we have the bank renew it. Um, it's been signed by the developer and by the bank. Um, and I just wanted to bring it to your attention that it was uh going to be renewed.
Yeah, and I already signed off on it. So it's got the um ten percent well revised, you know, up to date number. So again, that people in the audience, that protects the town for the unfinished work on a subdivision. So that's all set. Okay. Good on that.
Excuse me, Dan, can we do the pledge of allegiance?
Sure. I guess we could always do that as a practice.
Yeah, there you go.
You're trying to make us like this.
Like the pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Father for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Will, inviting us.
Yeah, I was patriots.
Let's see here, uh, next one. If you touch on the um the CPC vacancy. So as some of you might know, Brian Carroll resigned in late August and he, their family moved. So because of that, we have a vacancy on the CPC. Um, in the typical practices, once that happens, you notify the select board, um, the town administrator. That was done officially at our joint meeting last week. And um, as I understand it, Daniel, an update, but they put out a notice uh this week. Um, and that anyone interested in CPC would uh send in their resume. I think you can also fill out a citizens' action form. And um and I think that needs to be in by the thirtieth of September. And that process then will follow whereby the seat, both the CPC and the select board will interview the candidates or candidates. And from there, they'll get together and make a, have an open discussion and vote on um candidates that are candidates, one candidate that would uh that would sit and take place, uh, take the place of Brian Carroll. As I understand it too, Danielle, they, that would only run to April or?
Just until May, just until election day.
To the election, okay.
Then the elections take it through and the rest of that term.
Right.
Guys, a quick question. Can we just double check that town expiration date on when the paperwork needs to be filed? Is this the thirtieth?
No, I don't know if it's the thirtieth actually.
We think it's that.
Uh, yeah, I have to check because we didn't place the end of this contract.
Yeah, I thought it was twenty seventh.
Okay, it might have been the twenty seventh.
Yeah, okay, if we could tell.
I don't count that in.
Twenty seven?
I did.
Okay, so your, your information could be that's spot on. So again, I would defer to the actual advertisement, not me. Uh, but that's a, that's an update, just that we wanted to share with everyone. Okay, and then uh, let's see, we could do, you wanna tou- touch on um ADUs, accessory dwelling units?
Um, sure. I don't feel a lot to add to this. I just wanted to mention that there have started to be some trainings and webinars and um meetings. I've just been attending, you know, when I can to find out what we do know about the law um as it's evolving. Right now, um, there's something that we have to do right now, but I'm just gathering some information for the CPC. We don't know yet whether the state might be issuing guidance, but um from what we've been told by, um, so I attended an MAPC meeting last week where their legislative staff gave a little bit of an overview. They expected the state does issue guidance, it would be more of a light touch rather than towns have to pass anything. Basically, what happens is on February second, um, if a town does not have an ADU by law in place, it just defaults to the state definition of ADUs. And so um building inspectors do need to issue permits for them and, you know, in accordance with what the state um that's all we really.
Right. Right, and for people in the audience or um online, it's it's part of the Affordable Homes Act that was signed into law by Governor Gillian, I think, on August sixth. And um it will go into effect, I think, on February second. And as Danielle pointed out, if we don't um draft a bylaw, an ADU bylaw that you know, provides some guidance to really our building inspector who will receive the applications for, for these permits, um, it's kind of a free for all. So that is gonna be our job and we'll have some public, lots of probably public hearings. We'll probably put it on the agenda for every um CPC meeting all the way forward. And the indication we got, as we discussed as a group at the joint meeting with the select board last week, is that the acknowledgement that we'll probably need a special town meeting in January in order to enact um or vote on these zoning bylaw changes. Because if we don't, you know, again, it'll just go into effect on February second. So we don't really have the luxury of waiting until June of twenty five. And then when people ask, well, why don't we do something for October? There's just not enough time um to get something on there for October and really have like a healthy debate, public and everything like that. So.
Yeah, Danielle, do they, do they indicate that their towns are gonna have any options to limitations? Um, I mean, I've, I'm trying to having messed with this ADU thing for a number of years now, and talking to the building inspector about what's allowed by right, which is almost everything that's in an ADU other than a law maybe. So I own I don't know. Since this ADU bylaw from the state is so broad, does it give us any, it doesn't sound like it could really give us any real action to make a lot of rules.
The basics are the size limit would be nine hundred square feet or half the size of the primary residence, whichever is smaller. Um, towns are allowed to set their own setbacks, uh, height requirements, things like that. Towns are allowed to do site plan review. Those site plan review, I, most communities I've been talking to don't wanna do that because they can't control what it looks like. There's almost no point. Um, there's very little. And it almost gives the perception that there's some control, but in fact, there's not.
Yeah.
Um, other basics are if they can be within a residence or they can be detached. Um, they can be let me see, they are still subject to Title V in the same way for numbers of bedrooms. Um if they're denied for Title V reasons, the denial comes from the Board of Health and not by another, you know, permitting authority. Um, let me see. It's just for single family homes and it is for every residential district that allows single family homes. So for North Reading, that would be all of our. Yeah, I'm just looking at my notes of what more they, they've given us. The state has definition. That's really very basic.
Um, yeah.
And that's, those are really the parameters that we've been given.
Well, I just wondered if, if, at what, at what point the rules and regulations that may, we might put in place, we, we run up against what the state has mandated or allowed already.
I mean, I, I think the recommendation, at least what I've heard is the basics would be to adopt the definition of ADU that the state gives. And then at that point, um, decide what we think are appropriate setbacks and height limitations. And those are really the parameters that we have control over, from what I understand so far. So definitely would be a good idea to pass a zoning that, that puts controls. Otherwise, if we default to our accessory structure by law, you're having much smaller setbacks than you would normally have for a resident. So those are things that can be that.
But that's what I understand most towns are doing is just stipulating that it's no longer a shed. You know, um, or a chicken coop. Which is what the accessory, you know, structure falls under now. So um it would, it would now extend to complying with the existing setbacks that are, that apply to homes or to the dwelling. So, but there's, there's a lot of things that we're gonna go over. Sorry, um in the next few months, just making people aware too that you know, you know, sometimes you think of this and hope this would be great. I'm, I'm gonna, um, you know, I'll turn into a landlord and I'm gonna rent. But beware too of what you wish for too, because once you start doing that, you're gonna fall under the state's guidelines. Um, for a rental property, you'll have all the same laws as well as some of the building requirements. And then you're gonna have some problems if you ever have a tenant that doesn't wanna pay you rent. Good luck evading that person. So you're gonna take on some, a lot of, a lot of things you need to consider if you're interested in doing it. If it's just a family member, great. And then I guess that'll just become a problem with somebody someday when you sell the residence. But, um, but it's just, there's a lot of bewares. Um, there's a lot of unknowns too, as far as metering. Um, can we still have the same requirements right now, which is one meter with so RMLD? Um, they don't wanna put two meters into these two, two different dwellings. Like what's the state's position on that? I think all of that should be a comprehensive bylaw that, you know, shows the utility side, um, which would encompass Title V and any of those requirements. So that could knock you right out too. You know, you're adding a bedroom or two, um, that puts you well, well above the capacity of your system. And that's where, you know, other departments get involved and then might deliver the news to you that you don't have enough area to do the system or you have to put in a whole new system. And we all know this, thirty thousand dollars maybe. So it can get quite pricey. So you just wanna be upfront with everybody. Um, and like kind of what we're doing with the MBTA thing, we're trying to get both sides, pros, cons, give you all the FAQs. We're gonna try to do that in, say, four months, uh, the last, um, so that's that, uh, Mr. Chair, sorry.
So a couple of things, um, I, I think that um regardless, I think it would be great if we could meet with um, with Jerry.
No, I don't think we can, you know, and absolutely.
Talk about a lot of this stuff. And, and my understanding is, will um will our, if we create a bylaw, so our bylaw will actually have, will, will, will have um a place in this. Is that correct?
Yeah, it'll govern the, the use, you know, the actual use and ADU use. And it will, back to Warren's point, when, whenever you pass uh an article, you know, in town meeting, it goes to the attorney general. They're reviewing it and they'll review it with that particular agency or group and to make sure it complies. So they're accepted in your bylaw, as Daniel knows, that they, they take issue with, they kick back. And it's something you just would have to address. But I mean, the bylaw is the bylaw. Once it's passed at, at that same special town meeting, if it's enacted, you know, and Jerry has something to follow.
So if, if we created bylaws that were somewhat stringent to keep the footprint of the town in a way, so we don't have like a building behind every building, driveways, a lawn, all that stuff we've talked about before. Um, is that something that we can have some role or to like, um, you know, if we have certain individuals that, you know, are really upset by this? How is that like, you know what I mean? Do we have any, do we have any impact at all in what goes on?
It's true. Well, you're kind of, you're, you're I think what's gonna, the limiting factor will be the property itself, like the size of the land, the land, um, you know, we're septic now. So if we, if we weren't septic, you know, there, that would open it up to a few more more properties because they don't have this big leach field and all this stuff to deal with. We're all, we all know here, you know, we all have that. So that, that could limit you. Uh, perhaps you could move it, you know, but we, most of us know, you know, our systems is pretty much dangerous. So that'll be the limiting factor. But I think you can't really go beyond setback requirements are for the dwelling, a dwelling itself. I don't think you could make like the ADU more stringent than the dwelling. I think as long as we return to um dimensional requirements of a dwelling, so that you, you know, if you're a neighbor, you don't want necessarily a you know, a twenty by twenty little structure, you know, ten feet from your backyard. That's gonna have really smoke from cooking, loud music possibly, whatever. It just, it helps, I think, to have that extra ten feet like ours would be.
So when, when the ADUs, um, I'm sorry, but when the, if, if this does go on impact on however it plays out with that bylaws and things like that, has our um, has our select board um looked at any impact like we're bringing in, say, in a hypothetical, they have no idea what a, what a six thousand home community will hold for additional ADUs. I don't know if it's a hundred. I don't know if it's six hundred. I have no idea.
I think it's forty, forty-five hundred as a single family dwellings in town.
Okay.
Of the fifty-nine hundred dwellings, you know.
Okay.
So it's forty-five.
So if there's forty-five nine dwellings.
Nine thousand.
That's your back four.
Yeah.
So my point is, is that this, like, has our select board, and I don't think, because I, I haven't read any of the language, maybe, but something that should be addressed with them is that if this is going to affect our schools and our places of fire, like, they need to start budgeting for some of this stuff, because if we're adding additional families, an additional uh population into our community, you know, like the one side of town, their lots are really, really big. You know, it'd be very easy for them to add an ADU in the back of their house, you know, maybe other than, I mean, maybe not so much the cost of an ADU because they're very expensive. But when it comes to like just the logistics of, hey, on the, on the east side of town, you know, we had fifteen ADUs in the first year and along came fifteen or twelve more students, times twenty thousand dollars a student. My question would be, is the select board prepared or are they even ready for something like this? Because we're in a budget crunch now and if they just start adding more numbers, just like that, you know, here we are again. You know, we'll be back to the drawing board and talking about overrides and everything else. Um, and I know we were, you know, just, just annoying, thank you.
Yeah, I, I am, this, this is a question that's been going on for a long time, but there's been I don't think the impact is gonna be as dramatic as you might, I mean, you know, think that it's gonna be great, but um in the past, other places that have tried it have not had stellar results. When, one, you're actually enacted a law to allow you to build a three or four hundred square foot in your backyard and rent it out. And we thought this was gonna solve their, their, their housing crisis. And the, the law just basically flopped. Having anybody even want to apply for it.
So, well, we'll see. Well, Jerry says he had thirty-seven inquiries as of last Monday, you know, so there's a lot of people interested. And you know, what that translates into hours. I think too, there's big stipulation or differences between the types of ADUs. So an, an attached one where you're just adding a section of your house, perhaps you are adding onto it, or you're just literally sectioning off a portion of your house. I mean, that's an easier lift and it, it doesn't have as many impacts, right? Um, it's the one that I think is an actual detached, you know, ground up type of structure that has the most impact. Um, and then could, you know, house another family. And when I say family, a family is just two, two people or whatever, but uh, one person really technically, I think, by the state's definition, the HUD's definition, but um I think that's where per job you can get into. If we just had fifteen kids as a result of ADUs, have we factored that in at seventeen, almost eighteen thousand a pop? Which is about the cost. And I mentioned it last weekend, um, in the uh the joint meeting, I think, I think the select board was just as much a, a little on their heels as well and trying to figure it out too. I got the sense from um um, Mr. O'Leary, based on some of your questions, but there, it, it's just there's a lot of, there's a lot of things to factor out with. You are only being assessed maybe another thousand or two dollars because when my conversation with Deb Carbone is the property, say you're, you know, it's, any property in town, but say you're paying ten thousand dollars a year in property taxes and it's for the land, the house, a garage, whatever. If you get it, if you build an ADU, it's definitely in addition to that. They're, it's gonna be assessed or whatever, but she said it might add a couple grand to your taxes. Well, if you add a child to the school system, that's seventeen thousand dollars. That's, you're not gonna pay for a child by, you know, I have a bunch of ADUs, um, as far as the tax base. So how are you then paying for those? Say, if you just out of the entire town, forty-five hundred residents, I don't think it's unrealistic to then fifteen additional students, but we're again, there's not, there's not the tax. You know, there's, tax for that doesn't support, it is supported. So you can see how it can get out of hand. So I don't know how, you know, we have one of the select board members here, Nick Massey, but I don't know how you know, the boards, but I'm sure you're gonna be tackling it too, but everyone's just trying to figure out in the next few months, like what, what the impacts will be. I know we're trying to have a meeting with the financial, uh, finance committee, so we're gonna probably bring that up on, in one of the items.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
Did you, did you, does, did you know? Um, or anyone up there, um, do, do you know, um or can you, or would provide information to everybody? Um, basically, what do residents have for rights currently to do the same thing?
Oh, to do, to, to build? I mean.
To build and then, and then what does this offer extra? And then, and then my other concern is that, um, since, since you would have to jump through a basketball in order to get this thing done by February. I mean, you know, anytime you push something like, like this and you have to give the vote and everything else, it just isn't fair to people because who has the time to, to make the dairy meeting? You know, to accomplish this. And, and if there's any way of postponing this another six months or even another year, I mean, the situation's gonna be there. I don't think, I don't think people need to stay safe.
Yeah, this unfortunately, I think, um, it's that's the problem here. We're in a pinch because we have to try to do something before February second. If we don't, it just devolves to the you know, Oklahoma free for all. And I think we all would agree we need to do something, even the dimensional ones that I mentioned are simple ones that other town building inspectors are pushing for. And even for the October warrant, they're able to do that because it's a quicker.
Well, I thought, I thought within two, three, oh, we can just cancel. Say we don't want it.
Or to comply with the law, you mean?
No, you don't have that.
Yeah, we don't unfortunately have the knowledge of the ADU. It's different than MBTA, which we'll be covering obviously time, but it's different than that because the state in, for, for those four against whatever is making, if you will, us vote on, you know, making us change our, change our zoning. On this one, it just goes into effect. So it's a little different thing. It's almost like the, if it was similar, it would be like the MBTA uh law just goes into effect.
Go by default.
Right, and meaning it doesn't matter if you guys pass one or not. It's a, it's a law. And that's kind of, that's the difference between the MBTA one and, and this one is, we need to pass bylaws more to protect ourselves as the law goes into effect, whereas the other one is they're asking you to vote and with only one possible outcome, yes, you know, or so they're, they're, they're diff- different there. But I wanted Jeff, what, just to answer your question, because um, but chapter eight, the um, the acts of nineteen seventy-five, the zoning act, which created a new chapter forty-eight, we're here all time of all three A. Well, this is section three, just before it. It subjects that zoning may not regulate. No zoning ordinance by law shall regulate or restrict the use of materials, methods, or construction of a structure regulated by the state building code. No zoning ordinance shall by law regulate or restrict the interior area of a single family residential building. So what's that saying is answering your question, there's nothing stopping you right now from within your home to build an ADU. Playing some, the only thing would be the building code, you know, you have to apply, you know, apply to the building code. Go ahead, Warren, sorry.
So, yeah, so in the past, the uh, the building inspector came to us and talked about the fact that he had no, he had no, no control over some of this stuff. He had no teeth in it. And we talked about it a number of times, but he, but um, he slowly but surely backed away as he found out that exactly, that that bylaw that you just read, basically allowed him to do pretty much everything up to one last little thing. So um, he said he just, he said he gave up. He, he said it's not worth trying to put an ADU by law in place. Um, and this is before the state did this.
Right.
That it was just that, that so many of the things were allowed as a right already in the building code.
Right.
That it couldn't.
And section, section three will, will basically be the same for, in, say, a detached ADU. Inside that nine hundred square feet would be the same um law that would apply. It's the building inspector cannot tell you what you can and can't do really in it, but it doesn't need to, you know, the fire department's to sign off on it. There's a, there, there's definitely life safety, building code, and now energy code. There's all different things like that that must apply. And as we mentioned now, again, if you're gonna turn it into a rental property, there's a news, there's, that's an entire entirely new set of documents that you need to comply with as well too. But um, Jeff, do you, you have one more point? You had the end up.
I know, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I'm sorry.
So one of the points that um I wanna try to touch on a little bit, um, so do we have, or does the town have any type of control of permitting costs or any like associated costs to, to actually build one? So, so and my point is that um depending on what we do with that in the tax, like in the tax rate, like how's that gonna affect the housing? A single family home with an ADU has a separate tax structure and a single family home without one has a different tax structure because that particular home supposedly there's a benefit versus the home that doesn't have it. So it's protect the town a little bit with revenue. I'm just kinda like wheelhousing this a little bit.
Yeah.
So when it comes to like permitting and it comes to the actual process, the cost of doing that, the town, it seems like to me, could probably capitalize if they wanted to in a way.
I don't think.
So you can't, you, you can't.
It'd be really the value for one thousand, you know, um.
Well, so, okay, so all these profits, they'll, they'll be assessed.
I mean, it's, it's that conversation with the assessor's office that, you know, it, it, infrastructure adds, um, not structure, but if, if in realistic building costs, son of twenty by twenty structure, um, twenty plus by twenty, if you're going to nine hundred square feet. Um, you know, you're talking about we're talking about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's what you're gonna get taxed on, you know, as far as the value. So she gets brand new because that's going right into the building department. They know how much it costs, so.
What I was doing, what I'm, when we were trying to, when we started looking at this ADU by law, I had kind of boiled it down ultimately to something you actually mentioned with life safety. What we wanted to do is to make sure that any of these ADUs were, were um legal ADUs because then when the fire department shows up, they know there's more than one family in there. And that would, so life safety is one of the things that we were looking at. That's a good reason for, to have an ADU by law.
But you're.
Well, my, my point is if, 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 if the town's gonna get stuck with this and you gotta swallow that pill.
Yeah, is this?
If we do.
Is this staying in the Delta?
So that's right. So I'm not so convinced that it is that the case.
Yeah.
Totally. Um, and like, I think you said it, Warren, the last time we met. It's just a matter of time before maybe there's opposition even for this. I know we're dealing with the other stuff, with the three A stuff.
Well, I don't know if you had a chance to read all the stuff from town council that was um on, that we got in an email, but one of the comments in there, which I, which I basically wanted to use, that, that the state who provided us with a lot of these bylaws, you know, first of all, hold the ultimate right to change that zoning if they want to. Period.
Is that opinion or is that law?
That's in, that's what, that's in that, if you read those.
So that, okay, that's opinion, right? So ultimately, the rights come from the state and they can be removed by the state. So they just move in the goalpost and make everybody happy.
Yeah.
We're all happy when they move the goalposts.
Actually, I, so I think our, Jeff, I think our job basically is to see, see what much latitude we're given and provide as much protection as we can for the people of the town. And that's why my question was, to Danielle was, did they give us any room, was there any wiggle room in this, you know?
They have like three, three things, right?
Basic reasonable dimensional requirements and like I mentioned, site plan review, but I don't really think we wanna get into.
No, because there'd be so many.
I think if we were to pass a bylaw that put dimensional requirements into place, we would at least be able to make it more restrictive than what the default, but otherwise.
Right.
Yeah, and the state would accept that?
Well, I mean, because they're gonna let towns have some reasonable, you know, control over their zoning and that's nice.
Why can't it be clear in their language saying that any residential area is subject to this period?
Yeah.
So the things that's
Directions.
The protection that we have that basically are water health because, you know, we're gonna accept, and the other thing, not just water health, but any, but conservation or environmental stuff. Because they, they, there are some areas that are tentative, but they can't do any more nitrogen loading. So they're limited to, you know, your bedrooms taking half on that lot.
Well, they, they can change that too.
Uh, no, that's, that's how. Yeah, no, they probably will change that. Nitrogen loading now.
Well, why don't we, we're at eight o'clock, so we have a, obviously a big agenda, so we'll start. Well, I think again, yeah, we, we just wanted to get people out of deep, but we're, we're gonna have lots of work to do in ADU, so I don't wanna plenty of time for, to hear from all of you and look forward to it. So, okay, so what, you wanna um read the notice for the eight o'clock?
There won't be one for five hundred because it's continuing.
They do?
That's what you ever talked about. Oh, no, we, we've already read the public hearing notice at the first when we.
Okay, so this continued. Thank you. Okay. So um, we have, uh, next on the agenda, eight o'clock, five hundred River Park Drive, site plan review. You wanna step forward, introduce yourself?
And I just ask, is there anyone here for five hundred River Park?
Hi, hi, uh, well, I'm Everett Tattlebaum. I'm with Tierside Energy. Uh, with me, Matt Pelletier from Reading Municipal Light Department and Mark Price here from our engineer, RJSC. So we're here at this project. Um, we met about a month ago and David started, we weren't there, but thank you for the time last month. Uh, I think I'm happy to describe more of the public that you're capable. Quick updates I think we wanted to make um since the last meeting. We continue the conversations with Deputy Chief Galvin. And he's uh signed off on our submittal, which describes our equipment. As well as the emergency response plan. And so I think he's communicated to Danielle and the board that he's comfortable with our plan. Uh, we also confirmed with Lydia at the Conservation Commission, uh, there's no filing required there, given where the footprint of the equipment is. Um, those are two big things. One change on the plan.
I'm so sorry to interrupt you. Excuse me. I I'm noticing that that Max hasn't arrived yet, and this is a hearing that actually will require a vote of four members. And I don't want Max to miss any of the presentations if we.
Uh, you want to text him?
I'm sorry.
All right, Danielle, see if he's very close.
Max is an assistant scout master, so he had voice.
I actually say. I don't want to get into the MBTA, just. Why don't we just wait a little bit? You said your name's Everett?
Everett, yeah.
Yeah, great. I'm Dave. Nice to meet you.
I actually.
I got up to speed on there. Okay, so I know where you're at.
Still looking into a couple of this and I was surprised because seeing this is not really technology at all. It's pretty old, actually. It's a replacement. Yeah, replaced by Texas, which is pretend going for for in the summertime for the when the low really goes up. They're just will tie this right in and go to help carry the load, right? Depends on what carries.
Yeah.
You know, a number of places that have a good game.
It was good. Matt, you're RMLD. So I I'm interested too, because I I've done a recent one with um. National Pretty Graft and and it just it was tons of red tape and commissions in this. I mean, is your process? Everything I've ever seen with RMLD is easier. So is it easier doing one of these?
Much easier, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a lot easier.
That's great.
We have uh we're regulated a lot with things that we get from office space, I'm sure. We can do, we have power to do a lot.
It's great. Yeah, it's RMLD, love it. All right. How was scouts?
Very good, very good.
Scout master, worthy here. All right, we were starting, we just started um five hundred. Um, River Park and then Danielle just gave us a heads up that we need to have the floor here, so.
Very good.
That's why you came just in the nick of time. Okay, so Everett, um, did you have anything more you want to say or do you want to repeat? Just just summarize.
Yeah, there's my my three key points that we spoke last time. The three changes are updates since we last spoke one, which I was getting to. Uh, we have submitted an updated plan demonstrating the lighting changes, particularly for existing light towers in the parking lot. Even that made the one parking space, because when the strike happens, we don't want that light tower effectively in the wrong side of the space. But otherwise, not changing any uh the existing uh lighting conditions. Uh, the fire department, we worked with Deputy Chief Galvin uh since the last meeting, and he's approved our equipment. As well as the emergency response plan, which is a third party report that he asked us to complete. We had a consultant prepare that by protection engineer. Uh, and he's confirmed that he's satisfied with that side of things. And then I'm just making a note that we worked with Lydia at the Conservation Commission and she walked beside me with our team. Uh, to confirm that our uh project does not require filing with the county. There's weapons off the parking lot there and there's some. Uh, basins and things. We wanted to make sure that we were clear on that side of things. Um, so those are the three key changes or updates. And then high level of the project, um, with RMLD, it's it's a goal of the. As department to get the project constructed this year, which means we're on a tight timeline. Obviously, you're hopeful that uh. We can do things to get a vote or approval, you know, barring any questions or any a a piece of the result.
Warren will start to do.
Uh, no, like I said, I should have looked into it. Apparently, it's it's uh, as I said, I. This isn't something brand new that nobody's ever done. This is this is a very much a common thing across the country in places that have public services and buy up. Some backup, so so I'm I'm pretty comfortable with it.
Thanks.
No, I think it's great technology. I think it's exciting to hear that a project like this wants to come into town and uh. Thank you for taking the time and address some of the concerns we had at the last meeting.
Very good.
Yep.
Yep, um, so when we last, um, met, we talked about the the lifespan of batteries. We talked about the recycling and the the um. The the process of recycling. I don't believe we got an answer last time we met.
Sure. So I do have some notes here. Uh, we worked with a couple of the OEMs, equipment manufacturers. Uh, to identify who they're currently using for recycling the systems. And so there's uh three names and three firms. Uh, a life cycle, American Batteries Technology Company, Redwood Materials, facilities in uh New York, Arizona. Uh, Nevada. So to make the point, there's a current industry for recycling these exact technology imperative batteries. And the expectation is that as the market fills and more is deployed, there'll be four facilities to recycle these. Um, so one is there is an industry already existing that's taking them in and they work with our equipment manufacturer where we buy the batteries from. As part of the lifecycle solution from the battery manufacturer. The other piece, I think, for uh liability and protection for the the town's comfort. Um, and our disagreement, it's on our company, Tiersize, they put up a financial assurance that we're responsible for deconditioning the system. Um, and taking it outside recycling it, you know, responsibly for the terms of the contract we have. Not with Paradigm at five hundred River Park where the site's going and our contract with RMLD.
Right, so we talked about the recycling process. Um, so is there a portion of this? Because I I thought there was something that maybe Warren brought up. Is there a portion of this that doesn't actually get recycled or can't be?
No, the components are uh elemental lithium, there's phosphate, there's different elements that can break down, and then the zen is steel container. Um, inside the the just multiple notes here, but to mine the lithium fresh. Is a much more expensive process, which is why there's already an industry recycling. And so they can take breakdown, the battery cells themselves, which. I glad who was here last time, who was our literally here, he described the paste and the roll is inside the box effectively of the chemistry there. Um, it's a little, they'll take that part of it, we break down the elements and they can separate them and restart the process and then fabricate new batteries. Um, if you want to let's go back and forth, I'll get out of my depth and kind of understand the cover, explain the chemistry of it. But they're able to take apart the system and reuse the base materials. Um, and it's currently so expensive to mine new materials that it's actually economic to recycle it.
And this company, I'm familiar with, they call Ascend Elements in Westboro. Are you familiar with them?
I know the name, I don't know anybody.
They 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 are a recycler of of lithium batteries, things like that, so.
They say that the um a lot, one of the things I heard, they said to some of them. The batteries, the recycled batteries, they actually hold power longer and more than the original bill. So um, so it is, it's it's an industry that's that has some uh some clarity, so.
So um, I'm going to open up to uh the public if anyone has any comments or questions on five hundred. No, I don't see any. Um, and I I again, I'll I'll speak up. I'm fine with everything. I saw that Deputy Galvin. Um, was okay with everything, so uh I think I think we're all consensus for. Already you may hear motion, so. Yeah, so I'll close that public hearing and we'll we'll trade vote.
Oh, um, I'm still asking questions. I don't I don't know what to what to ask. I don't really understand. What you are all talking about with five hundred River Park. I wasn't sure if it was zoning. Um, got into batteries. So I I'm I'm kind of, I'm kind of uh.
It's okay. It's a battery storage system. And our our friends here could probably describe the exact technology a little bit better, but that's what we're. They're changing their site, if you will, so it's something we have to, you know, comes before the board because they're adding the system to their site plan or their site. Um, but if you're looking for, you could always grab the RMLD guys on the way out and they'll give you a little education on it.
So we you're planning, you're not planning on having a top that that.
Yeah, it's a storage, a power storage, yeah.
Yeah, it's a bunch of batteries and it's all about peak use and all that stuff. And they're going to hold a lot of energy so that when the town's peak, they can meet the peaks and valleys. As back demand increases, this will supplement. Um, and the presentation they gave was actually pretty good.
Um, which I missed.
You did. Uh, it was pretty good. Um, the big questions we had for them were um. The batteries are like four feet wide by five uh four feet and I think it was like six feet tall or something like that. They're huge. It was like sixty five of them or something. So there's a lot of batteries. So the last time we met. They had a a couple of engineers here fall and they they really went and asked a lot of questions. Uh, safety, the runoff, the um, the fire department, what ifs, and all that stuff. Thank you, Danielle.
Why work with the, I was in the Navy, so submarine to banks and banks of huge. You know, batteries. So I understand what you're talking about. I just didn't know if the town was gathering this up, to take them on people's hands. Send them out to get reprocessed and buy them back. So the town isn't getting involved in it.
No, this is a private business endeavor along with their utility or our utility really. Okay, so we closed the meeting. Um, Jeff, you want?
Uh, sure. Um, I moved that the community planning commission goes to approve the plan entitled Site Plan. For grid ESS at Terradyne five hundred River Park Drive, North Reading, Mass. Dated seven eight two zero two four, last revised nine ten two zero two four. Drawn by RJ O'Connell, I'm sorry, RJ O'Connell and Associates, Inc. Subject to the terms and conditions of the certificate initial approval dated nine seventeen two thousand twenty four as amended this evening.
A second.
All right, a motion under second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, move to a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, nothing, motion passes. You know, we need to sign some.
No, not today. Um, we will have the site plan to decide. Usually we do that after the end of the period.
Thank you very much.
So what I have to do is like file the decision that's just been issued and then um.
Thanks. Thank you so much. Thank you. Next up is the three AMB communities, public hearing.
Hey, what's up? We have the eight thirty.
There are there are no sign language?
No, well, I mean, that's just that. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yeah, right. Sorry, that's what we gave.
If you want to read that. So Danielle, we good? Okay, just gonna read the.
Sure. Uh, notice is hereby given that under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty eight, Section five. The North Reading Community Planning Commission. Will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September seventeen twenty twenty four, eight fifteen P M. In room fourteen of the North Reading Town Hall, three thirty five North Street. Will be a Zoom online or by phone. Uh, USB ID number ninety five four three oh oh nine two six. For the purpose of amending the code of the town of North Reading zoning bylaws in order to meet the requirements of. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty eight, Section three A. The changes include creating a new zoning overlay district, low road, multi-family overlay district, encompassing the following parcels, one hundred. It will road map fourteen parcel. Full road map seven parcel two. Where multi-family housing will be allowed by right sufficient to meet the requirements of Chapter forty eight, Section three A. And establishing new regulations for the overlay district. Additionally, the public hearing will address amending. The date of the town's updated zoning map and clarify the language describing the site plan review procedures to confirm. That the site plan review follows a special permit process, but is not a discretionary special permit.
Right, I don't want to hear any, so I'll have some ground rules here. So. We do have our council here from KP Law. John, I think, John, if you want to sit, come up, sit next to Danielle, it's up to you. That's totally up to you, like.
There may be other people that need the mic. I'll wait until you need to.
Okay, got you. You're right. There is enough of a mic. Okay, great. Thank you, John. Um, and um, we want questions directed to us, but at first, well, for me, but what we're first going to start with is just going to go around the table here. Um, and let any of the board members comment. Um, we have the map up here. We have done, I don't know how many presentations of this showing the location, the parcels. Um, I thought it's not necessary to really go through the same slide presentation as I can kind of scan the room here. And I see some of the faces that have probably seen this presentation as many times as we have. But what I thought would be the focus of tonight would just be uh allowing the the public to ask questions, make comments. Um, ask questions uh to council if that is uh applicable and, you know, have somewhat of a um. You know, make some progress, I guess, on I'm discovering more about the uh requirements of the law. So with that, I will go to Warren, my best chair. Yep.
Can I reset?
Yep.
Um, for anyone that is here for this, if you could please sign your name, your address, this is so that I can put your name into the minutes. Get it spelled correctly and also if you have been notified, you either have never been, I can email you or.
Thanks, Deb.
Thank you. I'm sorry if I'm moving this around this because I want to make sure.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone who wants to be.
Yeah, no worries. Yeah, we'll give an opportunity to people uh online too. They they want to ask some question, we'll be opening it up. Um, Warren, and I appreciate you, uh, you missed, uh, when I say missed, you weren't able to be at the joint meeting. Uh, with that you were on Zoom and that was good. I appreciate it because you were traveling, but since you're here too and you're. Um, have so much history too with the town and with this commission, I just. Be interested in kind of what your what your feelings are as we get closer to the vote uh in October. Any any comments, any thoughts?
Just um, just that, again, our planning administration, great job putting together the whole program. And identifying your two locations that we use to meet the criteria that that they've. That the state has put forth to us and that we can basically, these zoning changes that we're talking about, make them unminable, they're minor because. It's already that those two locations are already zoned, almost exactly the same as what they're asking us to to uh to do. So we really don't have any real um, any real issues, no real loss, there's no nothing uh. No damage to us by putting the guy in agreeing to this. Um, but if we don't and the state decides to sue us, um, as they do with Milton, and I don't really. We we got an art in an email um from from K uh KP Law. Um, synopsis of what they can do with Milton. And um, it's a it's a long drawn out process. They uh and they maybe have a reason to do it. But we basically really don't. Worst case will be is if they uh. Is everybody ends up just, you know, complying with it, which the state can push it pretty hard if they want to. Um, and if for some reason one of these, uh, people prevail and cloy, and they, they make the state take it back. Um, and going for us to enact this, we have to enact the zoning at town meeting. If the whole thing goes, uh, bad and we, and state drops it, go back to town meeting and put the zone back the way it was. If we put it that way, we can put it back. So. But it's not really, uh, uh, it is a little more difficult to put it back because of the, uh, the requirement for the two thirds of, but, uh, still very doable, probably not, um, in all my years of bringing zoning articles to the town meeting, you very rarely even get a question. So, um, um, so we, if it, if it did become a problem, it's something that we could, that we can take care of. So the idea here is to, um, is that the state is trying to find a way to encourage the building of affordable housing and the building of, of housing because it is the number one big problem the state has right now. And this is, this is not making us build, it's not telling us we have to build. It's simply asking us to provide, us and another hundred seventy communities to provide an area where we're multifamily development could be built without going through a whole special permit process. And that's the, uh, that's basically the flex of this.
Thanks, Warren. Um, Joe.
So, uh, my question is, um, um, in the law itself, there is no, um, as Warren mentioned, affordable housing, but there is no affordable housing aspect. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct, but, but.
Okay, thank you.
But it does not, it also does not prevent us from doing that. So, so we've, uh, we've been pretty good about doing that, so.
And I, I have a question also. Um, the articles, um, that we have thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. All those three articles. Is it necessary if the first article, hypothetically, if the first article fails, is it necessary at that point to vote on article fourteen and fifteen?
So I defer to our town administrator maybe on that. Do you know what, if there's any, if they're all for the N B T A, um, you know, zoning act, well, um, before thirteen, fourteen, fifteen.
Well, can you answer that? Yeah, if the first one doesn't pass, the other two are mostly booking. You know, changing our, our, our zoning bylaw to read what we voted on. To allow us, nobody's.
We're not following that really. What do you mean?
Well, that's what that is.
Mike said, he's, Mike's the expert. Not sure about the expert.
You're like an expert. I can certainly be corrected by a town council as well, but Michael Gilbord, our town administrator. So customarily, when we have, you know, a group of items that constitute multiple articles, um, there's one would lead to another, you know, and then the second leading to a third. I suspect that if the first article were to be defeated, the motion would be to pass over both article fourteen and article fifteen. Um, I can certainly be corrected by the gentleman behind me, but that's customarily what happens at our town meeting.
Okay, so then motion to pass over fourteen and fifteen would be.
Only because the first one is the basic vote, is the basic, uh, rezoning and the other one to put it into our zoning bylaw, update our zoning bylaw to reflect things that we just made.
Okay, so, so like, so then fourteen, um, didn't pass. I mean, thirteen didn't pass, fourteen and fifteen would, is it automatically go into a pass over or? Like, how would, like, that would still have to hit the floor.
Yes.
But the recommendation, um, they got the three recommendations that come out separately, one at a time. Is that correct? Through, through the moderator.
You know, like. Sorry, Mr. Jim. So, um, I don't know if the microphones are on or not. Um, hopefully everyone can hear me.
Yeah.
Um, so yes, votes would need to be taken on articles fourteen and fifteen. Um, I, I would imagine that the recommendation at that point to town meeting would be to pass over those articles. Mostly because I'm, I'm not sure that they actually can do anything meaningful if approved. Meaning the site plan review and certainly the zoning map can't be updated to reflect the zoning change.
Didn't, didn't that, yeah. So, uh, but that recommendation to pass over would come through the C B C, right?
Yeah, customarily, the sponsor offers the main motion and, I mean, procedurally would make the most sense at that point for the C B C to suggest that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Any other questions?
Very might by you in this side.
Public speaker.
I don't want to.
I'm sorry. Get everyone to get anything off their chest. Max, do you have anything?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, I understand a lot of folks I take in are here because they're concerned, you know, they've heard a lot of things on both sides in regards to, you know, everything to do with three A. I think that, uh, Warren makes a really strong point in the sense that, uh, we're fortunate here in North Reading, you know, we have an existing site. Um, we're able to zone it, you know, uh, as that. And so, um, it's not terribly concerning in that regard. I think obviously a lot of people are concerned, however, uh, on a long-term picture, you know, in the next ten, twenty, thirty years, you know, what's going to happen with the space. Now again, you know, it's privately owned by individuals. Um, what they do with it is, is their choice as far as, you know, we're able to allow through zoning for them to use it for. Um, I think, you know, if we was in a town like, uh, Hamilton or Wenham, um, let's say, you know, uh, where you take up farmland, that'd be great concern. You're in a dense area like Winthrop or Milton, you know, it might, uh, bring too many, you know, uh, too much new construction in, replacing and displacing, you know, residential homes for apartments and things. So there's, there's great concern there. I think our community is in a good position now. Um, and I think that if there's anything to really be concerned about, I would encourage a lot of folks to look into the new, uh, A D U laws that the state has passed. That would have a much greater impact on a community like ours than would, let's say, um, this N B T A Communities Act in regards to this location. So really my call here is to say, look into this new A D U, uh, law the state's put through. Um, because I really think that's, uh, more concern to the constitution of this community in the way that it is developed, um, than this poses, given the fact that we have a good zone. But there's, again, I think there's questions that hopefully, um, some of these other folks or anyone else here may be able to add to in regards to the long-term implications of this, which we don't fully understand.
I think so. It's not open to the floor yet, but, okay. So I just wanted to speak to, I think, I, I appreciate the comments of everyone and there'll probably be more, but, um, and I guess I'm not saying anything that I haven't said before, but to Warren's point, I, I think what, um, what concerns me is, um, is the state allowing us to use a parcel that doesn't add one housing unit, doesn't have one affordable housing unit. And so I, you know, I, I come at it from a different perspective, but also I kind of ask the people that are housing advocates, how is this helping you? How does, how, how does this help you? Besides ceding to the state, you know, to give them some sort of feel tier control over, um, a section of your town with the, with zero results. So whereas the A D U one, for Max's example, Max, you missed, we had a little discussion on it, it was on the agenda. Um, as Max points out, for better for worse, and we'll get into that. Um, the A D U one has dramatic effect on town. Um, and we'll, as we mentioned, that we covered it earlier today, we'll get into that. So this, I, I agree with you, Warren, like, it doesn't have any effect, but to repeat the same word, it doesn't have any effect. Unless you tear down Edwood, unless you tear down Mark's Landing, which is brand new. So why would this happen?
Well, actually, there are a number of, of people that have come out and complained about this for exactly that reason, saying that the way the state voted, uh, went up the old community, by the way, was able to take an already existing situation and read the bylaw. Okay.
So why does the state do that, Warren? Why does the state?
Basically because.
It's to have you bend the knee and they won all hundred and seventy-seven.
Yeah.
They're, they're throwing out stuff, you know, throwing out, allowing you to use parcels that give them nothing, give the town nothing, and they're allowing you to check a box and say, see? They got on their knee and, and voted in Texas. I just, it'd be one thing if it actually had a net result, like it actually was an open parcel that has the potential to have five, five hundred units. Then I'd say hats off. You, you, you did something here, but what does this do?
I agree with you a hundred percent.
So why, why should the town vote to change their zoning for something that does nothing for the town? So that's why we have to vote, because we don't want to get punished. Think about that. Just think about that. Coming from a guy.
I understand, but.
A veteran, like, come on, this is, that's, that's how the state wants to run the show is to punish us. So you know where I'm coming from and I've made myself pretty clear, but I've tried to be fair about this, at least when, when it's a review that we've done, um, a presentation, um, where, where like we did at the town meeting, I've tried to give both, both sides to it. Happy to share what I read, two pager at the June, uh, meeting. If anyone thinks that was not fair, you know, that, that's fine. You're, you're totally opinion, but I gave both sides of the subject.
So, yeah, to answer the question you asked, when the state started, and I, I just put some programs in, some of this myself. And then, and then, and then the state trying to fabricate a bylaw or, or a situation that would cover all the communities and provides the most uh, opportunities for just to have some impact. And because there were, because there are towns that, you know, we've already done this. You have to remember that the land up there, what's landing in Deadwood, I was originally designated to be all converting. And we let it not be commercial, let it not be commercial, let it all be residential. So that was, that, that was a big hit for the, for the state.
Warren, the intent of the law was, and rightly so, was to promote growth near transit within point five miles of transit so that you could reduce the amount of emissions, cars, and get easy. So since a lot of these communities and whether they did their homework or not, maybe they didn't, since a lot of the hundred and seventy-seven communities don't have this, they waited a whole year to say, oh, by the way, you know, now you can actually, we'll let you not be within point five miles and you can throw any parcel you want at us, you know? Um, and that's great that they did that, but it, it doesn't, we, we didn't comply with the law is my position, again, my position right off the get-go. This, the statute states point five miles within, um, you know, rapid transit and train station gives the whole gun a list. And we didn't comply with that. So just because the, the state agency in charge of, um, you know, um, governing the law, whatever you want to call it, implementing the law, it comes up with the guideline that says, you know what? I know you guys feel bad if you weren't included, but you can get in on this. And I say, no, thanks. So that's, that's just my opinion. Um, and I think I've been clear about that, but, um, what I'm going to do right now is just open it up to, um, the public and thanks for coming tonight and wish, if you would, just, um, oh, Mike, do you want to, I'll let you go first, but just address your questions through me. So I get kind of crazy here all over the place um, in the context of the, the public speaking. Go ahead, Mike.
Thank you, Mr. Jim. I just want to clarify something. The, the commission's advised to make a recommendation on all three of the articles this evening, depending upon what happens with the discussion, the first article, that may apply at town meeting, change how you wish to handle things for the other two articles, if that wasn't clear. And I'm going to get out of the way and make them for public.
Okay, thank you.
Dave, can I touch on something else?
Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, before you pass it over, I think the other thing to think about, obviously, as I know you hear folks talking about the concern of the non-compliance and, you know, how that impacts, you know, our ability to receive grants here in the community. Um, and Danielle, so I have this list of grant programs here. Who put this together?
Um, through the chair, uh, please. Um, the list of grant programs was put together, uh, was published by the state, was taken from the state.
Okay, great. So, I mean, going through it.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Are you talking about the spreadsheet?
The spreadsheet, yeah.
So I took every list on every grant that was published by the state and I put that into a spreadsheet and I described what each grant program was and whether we had received funding. So that, that was created by me.
So for those of you who, um, I don't know if we've made this public or shared it or not, but, you know, I'll share with you, you know, what I've been able to pull from it is, um, you know, essentially, it's not a whole lot we're at risk of necessarily losing, given the fact that, you know, a lot of these, um, are grants we haven't gotten before in the past, that we may not even be eligible with, uh, to begin with. Um, and many of them, uh, may not even be applicable to our community. Um, so essentially, I mean, other than some of the infrastructure grants and the math work stuff, it's not a ton of the line. None of it's even guaranteed to begin with. They're all grants we'd have to apply to anyways. Pretty important, you know, the state's made it clear, and I know we've talked about this, that, uh, the state doesn't have a ton of money to be handing out right now anyways. Um, so it's worth considering the fact that, you know, um, uh, if we decide not to go forward with this, um, there's no guarantees that we would be getting any of these grants anyways.
Thanks, Max. If you want to, I guess we have to step to the table, right? Danielle or?
Let's see if the microphone is on.
You can say, say.
Press the one at your shoulder. I mean, that's just the show. There you go. So that's.
All the big.
I didn't know.
Where's my chat?
Yeah, please. Approve the bench.
Thank you. Jeff, you are four twenty-seven, Mark Street. Uh, first of all, um, I want to thank you for all of your efforts and you've been doing both you and the select board, uh, chairman, members, or even, uh, for, uh, for all the hard work and time that is put on this. Uh, you've done a number of, um, hearings, and I think this is the most you've had here, uh, since, right? So people are starting to pay attention and it's, it's getting, uh, uh, become more, more important to, uh, people in the community. What I wanted to do here is that, uh, that, you know, that the North Reading Republican Town Committee has presented many townwide forums such as the ballot questions, opioids, uh, candidate site and more. The forums have been well attended in our last event covering the N B T A Act, attracting well over sixty people. So I think we had more, we had more there than we had tonight. Um, and, uh, compared to the low turnout in the, at the select board, you know, C B C hearings. Reaching the voters is crucial on issues that matter and H N R T C has consistently filled that need with its forums. Feedback, uh, that we've had about the forums of the professional, informative, fair, and unbiased. With that in mind, and the impact the N B T A Communities three A Act will have on North Reading, I have made arrangements to Kitty's Restaurant to hold their forum on October first at six thirty P M. Time we adjusted, uh, uh, this difficulty in meeting that time, uh, in right ease. Um, is, is in the rear room of the, uh, of Kitty's. Uh, proponents and non-advocates of the N B T A, N B T A Act, uh, on to present the benefits, disadvantages of the three A Act. C B C Chairman Dave Rutherford during the September ten S B C B C joint meeting eloquently said, we need to hear both sides. I'm extending an invitation and involving elected officials who participated in discussion with questions from the audience. Obviously, all officials are welcome to attend. Proponents of the N B T Communities three A Act, C E P O, the Vice Chairman for the, uh, Select Board, Rich Walmer, Selectman, uh, Warren Pierce, uh, C B C Vice Chairman for the, uh, Vice Chairman of C B C, and non-advocates, uh, uh, Dave Rutherford, C B C Chairman, Jeff Griffin, C B C Representative, and Nick Massey, uh, Select Board Court. The void in the echo chamber caused by separate presentations by the C B C and the S B. A joint discussion with legal counsel, if you wish, will make for well-informed voters. Citizens throughout North Reading have many questions and are looking for answers. This venue is a perfect setting to provide such answers to such questions. So, uh, it's an invitation to all of you. We normally have a very good turnout at these events. And, uh, so I send everyone, I sent the Select Board and the C B C an email saying what I just read. And I thought I would verbally, uh, let you know as well, so I'm going to pass this out to you in case your emails don't work. That happens.
Appreciate it. Thanks.
So thank you very much.
And thank you. I've never had Yala Quinn and David Law in the same. They usually don't go together. But I appreciate it. Thanks. All right, anybody else want to speak? You just say your name and your address.
Suzanne Lynn, two hundred lines landing.
Suzanne.
Should you, um, should you? I'm a resident of North, North Reading. I'm not loud enough.
It's more, I think, people at home, like, uh, when I say home online, right? They can't hear.
On the Zoom.
Yeah.
It's easier to hear. This isn't connected to the Zoom, but if you're allowed through the microphone, this will take off.
Let me know.
Suzanne Lynn, two hundred Martin's Landing. I moved into the first building um, the end of two thousand eighteen. Since I've been here, um, I honestly don't feel that Martin's Landing residents have been accepted as residents in North Reading. See, but may recall this your cash cow. Well, we are a cash cow because we only use your fire and police departments, our, our fire and police departments. And they're wonderful. They are wonderful. I'm really concerned about this bylaw change. I retired finally fully when I was seventy five, so I could retire in my over fifty five community and finally relax and enjoy life. This would change all of that. And it, I also wonder how long range North Reading really plans. My first question is, have any of the elected boards, any members of the elected boards actually looked at the layouts of our units? Do you know how many bedrooms we have or?
There's two, three. I have, I have, I've.
They're marketed as one and two bedrooms and yet I have a one bedroom. But I also have a den.
Yeah, I, I remember seeing some of the layouts.
Okay, so my den, I put front doors on, so it's a totally closed off room. One side is my office, the other side is where I have my treadmill. The whole back wall is a built-in murky bed. And I've got shelving, cupboards, plenty of storage. If this passes this bylaw, I'm not staying in that. I'm not staying there and I know a lot of other residence owners won't stay there. We intentionally moved to an over fifty five community. We love children. We love our grandchildren. We love it when grandchildren come to visit. We love it when they leave. You're really, it's true. We, we've done our raising of our children. I could, I know, I could sell my house, my unit. And two children can easily be put into that den. It's all quick. They don't even have to put beds in there. It's not a legal second bedroom. Or in the two bedroom units, those aren't legal, three bedrooms, because there's no closet and there's no window. But who's to know who's doing what inside your unit? And to Mr. Murphy, you said long term, twenty years down the road. If you have a mass exodus of your senior citizens from Martin's Landing and you have all these families coming in, you, your school age population is growing to, going to grow exponentially. And who's going to educate or pay for all of that? It's not gonna be Martin's Landing because your senior citizens are going to leave.
Dave, am I able to respond to that?
Absolutely.
Okay, so um, great concerns, totally hear where you're coming from, very understandable, quite frankly. Uh, I think it clears things up, and I think any of you who can help me in doing such, please do. Uh, is currently um, Martin's Landing is fifty five plus, uh, and that was set up by the developer and I believe the condo association, correct?
Yes.
So those are in your, your bylaws and that's the condo association. So um, this can't change that.
Oh, yes.
You've been touched on. Well, let me just step in on that. Well, let me just step in on that. So um, that's where, that's why we have counsel there too. We, we asked this question on Monday and the question was, cause one of the F A Qs um, frequently asked questions, how KP Law put together? Address what you just answered, which is appropriate and correct, which is can these zoning bylaw override an H O A? And the answer to that is no, but especially a pre-existing one. Um, but our question to counsel, and I think maybe John can speak to this, is um, does state law, as we understood, state law override an H O A? What we understand is yes, and I think, John, you kind of, I think, you know, it's not, it's pretty broad, but I think generally you said yes. But if you, if you wanna speak to that, cause this is, I think this is one of the big questions. Um, counsel, that maybe you could answer if you have any updated information or you've thought about it more. Cause I gotta put you on the spot on Monday. Thank you, John.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my answer is, is essentially state law can have an effect on existing contracts. The state law can't simply change an existing contract that can.
What does that, yeah, what does that mean? Explain that a little bit.
We have an attorney who's an owner resident of Martin's Landing. And he has been involved in town government in Reading and Lynnfield. And he said just the opposite, the state can and will change it.
I, yeah, I have to say too, I'm, I'm involved in, in something all in Portland, Maine. And our attorney said the exact same thing with the two H O As that they have in those two different phases that the state, in this case, Maine, allow override an H O A, any agreement, you know, anything you have in the issue that doesn't comply with state law. So once you go and make the, those parcels three A, then they fall under that law and they would have to comply with unlimited bedrooms, can enforce the fifty five and all that stuff like that. Um, that's, that's what, how would lie here? I'm not saying that's going on Portland, that's, that's what I understand.
Sorry, Mr. Rutherford, whenever people are speaking and you're speaking, I'm not gonna be able to hear this. You're gonna be muffled, so if you can let them know that.
Okay, yeah, just one person speaking at a time, thanks. Um, thanks, Doug. So I think that, I think we're all in agreement here. Cause if I go from Monday all the way till now, I think that's a key question that we, we need to get answered. Um, and again, maybe we can talk about it uh, at the, the forum that Jeff has sponsored here. Um, we can, we should definitely get answers on this. I don't know if we're gonna get an answer tonight. Yeah.
John, can you sponsor any more detail to that?
Well, number one, is there case law, you know, that kind of thing? Still, the question is too broad, but number one, I've heard records now of two separate opinions from counsel. I've not seen the questions asked to counsel. I have not seen the opinions the counsel given. I cannot respond to those until I see them. So if people have that question in response, I'd like to see it. That would be helpful. Um, but my position has not changed. State law again can have an effect on existing contracts, but in particular this law, which simply tells the town to adopt a zoning bylaw, the effect of that is implied with, is that the town will adopt a zoning bylaw just like all the other zoning bylaws you've adopted. Those bylaws didn't change, there's been contracts, they didn't change existing uses by state law, they cannot. That's what would happen here if this was adopted. It doesn't, this law does not put state overlay on town zoning. It simply says towns, you shall adopt the zoning bylaw, just like you adopt any other zoning bylaw, but it has to meet these requirements. That's all it says.
Well, the last, the last part of your sentence, meet these requirements, that, that's, I think, what we're getting at is I think the bylaw that you're passing is, is to be complying with the new forty three A, you know, um, law. So the provisions in that law are, are what apply now to that, that area, that zone. I think that's what, to me, makes logical sense. I mean, if we, 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 we asked this question at our June sixth meeting. I think we asked it maybe one other meeting. I asked it on Monday, so if you need us to formally just ask the question again, truly Danielle, so that KP Law can address it, but I think we do need it, we do need it answered and I think, um, you know, definitively would be helpful. It's, I think a key missing uh, frequently asked question from our listed F A Qs. So we could do that. I'd appreciate it. I think there's people here in the, um, in the meeting that might as well. Thanks.
So just to go back, in your name again?
Suzanne Lynn.
Suzanne, so my apologies for the answer I gave in the sense that I'm going basically off of what town council provides. And so, you know, hearing, you know, there's more information, I think that's good. Just wanna clarify my apologies.
Thanks, Max. No problem. Okay, um, anybody else on you? Yep. Lisa, can you say that by yourself and your address?
Hi, good evening. This is an actual eighteen um, street in the areas. Um, so first of all, thank you for doing this because I think that, and for the people that are here, because um, I think that when the town meeting sort of rolls around, there isn't sort of an opportunity to have a dialogue. So I appreciate you hearing what people have to say. So thank you for that. Um, I was actually watching television one morning and um, there was a news story about the Attorney General suing the town of Milton. And I was like, that's weird. Why would that happen? And I started looking into it and I was sort of um, appalled once I looked into it because the Attorney General was suing the town because people actually stood up and wanted to have their voice heard and were disputing something that didn't sort of make sense to them. And our elected officials worked for the people. Um, I started looking into it. I, my husband and I are kind of geeks when it comes to this. And we, we attend the meetings and we, um, you know, sort of are, have become interested in this. Um, and so I read the law, which is really confusing, to be honest with you, because it jumps around to different things. And I also um, communicated with the two attorneys who actually spoke at the Kitty's thing. And also Danielle was kind enough to get back on and some questions that I had as well. Um, and I'm really frustrated because the responses that, and I also read the KP Law responses, and the responses are fundamentally different. And so in part, it's, it's, it's frustrating to hear one thing from one attorney and something else from another, from another law firm. And my dad always said, there's three sides to every story. There's side A, there's side B, and then somewhere in the middle is the truth. And I do think that our lawyers represent or supposed to represent, um, you know, North Reading without passion or prejudice. That's actually from a few good men, but you know, they're supposed to be representing our town. You know, and I think it's important that we hear both sides so that you all know how to actually um, respond to this. Um, I think that there is a cost to the town if we don't do this, especially for the over fifty five communities that are there. Um, I will also say that, you know, Mr. Pierce, I think you're right that um, the town has done a great job zoning. I don't think that we need the state coming in and telling us how to do it. Um, they're already doing it, as Mr. Murphy pointed out, with the ADUs that are coming down sort of the road. Um, I, I think that when you read just the three A part, it's pretty clear what the intent of this is, which is, you know, that we have to have a parcel of reasonable size. It has to be multi um, family housing as a right. And as a right means that there's without the need for special permit, variance, zoning amendment, waiver or other um, discretionary zoning. Um, there's no age restriction um, that's also in there. It has to be without age restriction and suitable for families with children. And again, the suitable for families with children means no age restriction and for which there's no zoning restriction on the number of bedrooms, the size of bedrooms or the number of occupants. Um, it seems like the state is very clear on what their intent is. Otherwise, I don't think that they would have written it that way if they wanted something else. Um, and so again, I'm just, I'm just a little frustrated because I've, I've actually done my due diligence and I have read what you've had and I've talked to different people, but they're still conflicting, you know, answers. And so, I mean, just for the sake of the, of the town and also everyone here for us to make an educated vote, um, I guess that I'd like to see, you know, maybe coming up with, I know that um, Attorney Ike been mentioned at the Select Board meeting that the law firm represented um, both sides of the, of this for different towns. And maybe to have, you know, see, hear what the arguments are for both sides of the questions um, so that we all can um, clearly understand and so that you guys can make um, a recommendation at town meeting and also the Select Board can make a recommendation at town meeting. So I just encourage you to, maybe to do that, and I thank you again for the opportunity to speak and thank you for having this forum for us to speak, and I know the Select Board's having it as well, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Lisa. John, do you wanna address that? Um, because there's all the Monday is just the other towns and how KP Law is approaching? Um, cause you didn't have an exact number at the time.
Or whether you can. No, just briefly, okay, um. We did file a need to squeeze for two towns. Um, I forwarded the links to those, yep, the town who have those can read those. If you read them, you will see that they essentially follow the arguments that Milton filed with the S J C. Um, those are essentially three arguments. Um, number one is that the Attorney General does not have the authority to to pursue enforcement other than what's given in the statute, which is laws that are before your advice. Uh, the second argument is that the guidelines enacted by E O H L C were improperly enacted because they were not enacted as regulations. It's a technical argument, but essentially if that was correct, um, the E O H L C would have to start over. It doesn't mean that that would vanish, but they would have to do this again. The third argument was that if they were properly adopted, that those guidelines, which is what everybody's referring to about what's your density, where does it have to be, how many units? Those are come, those are from those guidelines adopted by the E O H L C. And the third argument is that those guidelines exceeded the authority that the state had to adopt those. So again, if that's successful, um, then the, hopefully the court will give some direction about what the limits of that authority would be. The E O H L C would go back and adopt further guidelines or adopt regulations if, if in fact they had to follow that procedure. So, and again, I've emphasized before, Milton lawsuit is not challenged, but would it even special act? And the K zoning, even if everything is successful, uh, it's unlikely that that special act is going to go away. How it's implemented and how it's enforced, that could change depending on what the S J C does with those arguments. But um, those are the best arguments there out there that I've seen, right?
I think uh, question number two is the um, E O H L C took over the, the guidelines, if you will. There was another um, agency in charge before that. Danielle, so. Yeah, so it, it switched over, so are they questioning the validity of the previous or original one that came out with the original guidelines about eleven months after the law passed? Or are they just going after the ones that came out, the final ones in August where the E O H L C took over?
As far as I understand, it was simply a name change.
Yeah.
So it's all been one day you would park, so you don't get.
Yes, it's not, it's not.
It's the same year, it's the same agency.
Okay, gotcha. Thanks, John. Um, there was another question here on that.
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead.
And I don't know how many communities you are dealing with, but that have, that have decided not to go along with it. But if we, if we decide not to go along with this bylaw, what's the probability that the state will sue us?
Um, right now, it's impossible to estimate, so we're gonna have to wait to see what the S J C does with this lawsuit because and in question there is, if any of those arguments are successful, the result is gonna be that Milton is not part of compliance, which would mean nobody else is out of compliance because there won't be any legitimate guidelines to enforce. In other words, there's gonna be a delay to determine what compliance will be. Um, if the S J C agrees that everything the Attorney General is asking for, one of the things they're asking for is an order, to order Milton to come into compliance or to take some action to force Milton into compliance. Um, if that's successful, then the assumption would be that every community that's not in compliance after the date that the E O H C, H L C has said they must be in compliance would then be subject potentially to the same type of enforcement that the Attorney General received from the, yes, we've got too many different acronyms going here. The S J C imposed. The SJC imposed in the Milton case. That would then apply to all the towns.
So I have one question as a ball. So on on number one, the the first point that you had on the Milton one, I think that's where a lot of people follow is where their contention is the law states that if you don't comply and they're they're comfortable, as you said, with um accepting the law as valid, but if the law, if you don't comply with the law, there's four different grants that you become, you know, non-eligible for. And what what stops the town, what prevents the town from accepting that punishment? As I think some people here in this room are willing to do, um and that's your punishment. So I think that's their point, too. So shouldn't that hopefully a judge like rule that way? Shouldn't that be the punishment? It shouldn't be like there's an extra legal um, you know, measure taken now. So not only the four, but now, you know, the thirteen and some other kind of things we're going to add on to it. Like, that's not the spirit of the law. The law is originally for you can question the additional thirteen, but it shouldn't have extra legal implications to it. If the town wants to wait that they don't they're willing to forego those four grants, they should be able to do that. I mean, that's the whole point of the vote, right?
That well, that's certainly the whole point of the first argument right in front of the court.
Yeah.
That's what's been.
I think that's, I can't, you know, not smart enough to know whether, again, the the EOHLC had proper guidelines on. But it seems like the first one is the best argument. You know, like you take your lips and you and you vote no, you know, um, so anyways, I appreciate I appreciate. Go ahead, Jeff.
I I have a question to counsel as well. Um, so I um so I I believe there are a couple of towns that are actually pushing their agenda out till April and past the deadline date. So with that in mind, is a town, in your opinion, is a town in a better position if they um do that? So so they just complete, they don't comply at all, they don't vote, they don't do anything, they just they're willing this to move this into, say, April or in the spring. And then they go back beyond that deadline. Or if a town before the deadline actually votes no. Like, do you see um the distinction between? Yeah. That's a good question.
And no, I don't legally. I don't. As far as the state's concerned, I don't think they'll see a distinction.
I think, though, practically, one one still has a carrot, you know, so you're talking about uh, you know, when Hamilton, when I decided to move this till June next year. And but I think what's different than a no, one can say is they think the Hamilton when it still has the carrot. So the state might not want to punish them, or they could still get them, maybe be able to comply.
Well, through you, Mr. Chair, keep in mind that the remedy in either case, assuming the state simply pursues remedy that the statute or the direction the statute provides, which is that town shall adopt to town meeting votes without zoning. That would be true whether the state, but if the town turned it down the first time, would they did nothing? And so the remedy is going to be the same, which is why I don't think it's going to make a difference.
Thank you. Um, sheriffs. Your name, name and address. And if you want to go up to the microphone, please, just so we can be consistent with everyone speaking, just for people at home. Hopefully, we're boring. Thank you.
Hello, Paul Benaro, four oh two Hert Street.
Thanks, Paul.
Um. I guess last, not another question, too, but but my my comment was if you're guilty in year one, the state would say you're guilty in year two, so it would just be a renewable thing. And I think there is another law where it would be get higher level. So I I think if, you know, I think that's what would happen. Um, and 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 I know I I I ran business for thirty-eight years and the state always said you cannot have many laws for employees that deny an employee states what state would 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 allow, but you can't restrict somebody no matter what your contract said. Um. I I I wanted to ask a question. How did we get? Was there any way to avoid getting here? Where we're on, where we're where we are on the on the state's calendar? Thirty of seven beginning? No, it's not for us. And move on. I mean, how do we get here?
Daniel could probably answer that better because Daniel, poor Daniel. When, you know, when they first passed the law, Charlie Baker signed it into law in twenty-one January. I think Daniel started to get the information and they waited a whole, like I mentioned, not till December of that, yeah, that year to do the initial guidelines and then they did the final. So it was a long process and Daniel, believe it or not, was updating us through town meeting and things like that. But was there any out like? I don't think.
Sounds not.
Yeah.
We didn't fire.
Yeah. And and to answer your question, Paul, the only time we had the ability to get out was back in the sixties, I think, where they they really they removed the thing, but by a town meeting vote, I think it was two thirds. You could get out of um being an MBTA community. That was the only time. And then they stripped that, got rid of it. So the only way to use to get to go in, it's like a lobster trap. You can only go in. There's no way to get out. That will answer the question. Go ahead.
I just noticed there's a gentleman on the chat, uh Jeff uh Jeff Gannon, who uh wanted to be recognized.
Sure, absolutely.
Yes, thank you. Uh Jeffrey Gannon, three Linwood Avenue. Um. You know, I've heard a lot of comments and questions, you know, the state is pushing this because the state needs housing and transit oriented is is a priority, less congestion, more things um in addition to that. Um, I think the CBC CPC has done a good job with the approach here um for addressing this law. Um, is there an idea of how many units could be created considering the density re- excuse me, density, height regulations and the and the lots available in the zone?
Yeah, to answer your question, yes, we did the calculations. And I think right now, we, the numbers that they have right now, you can do. We when we did with June sixth, if you remember when Ryan was here, so a little bit north of our one special word, like our requirement. Um, so where, I mean, where at right now, I got it all in front of me, but if you have it on top of your head, it's smarter than I am.
There are nine hundred, a little bit more than nine hundred units permitted. Um, the unit capacity requirement is only seven fifty. That's not seven fifty plus nine hundred.
Right.
The either or depending on if it's redeveloped. Um, I think we estimated that if the zoning were to be um used to its maximum, the developers, you know, if the owners chose to raise the heights um under this particular viola, I think we estimated somewhere in the range of a hundred to two hundred additional units.
Okay. So we're we're talking about maybe two hundred units and, you know, my reading of things is that, you know, that it was strategic what the CPC did to limit the actual amount of effect this would have on us. Is that fair to say? In terms of number of units that are potential? Or did it just work out that way in terms of where you chose? To put this down.
Chose the parcels because they have a lot of units, right?
I just wanted to be clear. I I didn't select the parcels.
I thought you'd not select, I might have recommended these parcels because they have the most amount of in, you know, per per acre, I guess, you know, in North Readings.
These parcels are already zoned for multifamily. Um, so this is why.
Yeah, where else in North Reading you have nine hundred and six units, you know, in that area of land. So that's all I mean, I didn't use. You, you, you know, that's why. Um, but but the key was meeting the guidelines that minimum guidelines, man, Jeff's right. Was was that was the key it um that we did. We we weren't going to go try to go over it, you know? I mean, usually when you have these guidelines, you you try to be the minimum.
Right, that, sorry, I could have just uh phrased it that way. So thank you for clarifying it. I just want to say that I personally don't think the town should pay to fight the state on this. I I was I listened in on the um special hearing for one of the select board members a few months ago, and I heard someone complain about paying two hours of legal fees to town council to attend that hearing. Um, this would be much more. Um, I I know that one of the board members mentioned that a lot of these grants that we might lose might not be applicable. Well, they might not be today, but they might be in the future. And we have a lot of things that we've heard that this town needs to do. So you know, again, fighting and spending money that way, I'm not really all for. I don't want to raise my taxes any more than anyone else to do some of these projects that we could potentially get state money for. You know, rentals in general are only twenty-five percent families with kids. So if we're talking about two hundred units, you can do the math. It's not a huge add to our town if if they were get to that max and if we're about to have the average amount of families with kids in apartment units. Most families go to singly single-family homes. That's a fact. Um. It my last question would be if appeals by other towns are successful, could our town um by way of the voters decide to reneg or change the zoning back to what it was?
Yeah, we covered that before, but we we could, it would just require a two-thirds vote at town meeting in order to do so. So it takes majority vote to pass it, but it takes two thirds to go the other way.
Sure. So I just, I think my my final comment would be, I I don't think it's worth the fight and the money for the next few years, considering that. I don't think the damage would be that bad in general, let alone if we're able to change it back if we decide after other um communities fight it. And we get through that and and we decide as voters that, you know, we would like to fall suit. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Daniel, is there anyone else online raising your hand?
I don't see another hand raised right now.
Okay, anybody else, uh Jeff?
So um it's just a little bit of response to um the gentleman who just called in, Jeff. I want to appreciate anybody who's paid attention to this thing. So that tells me I'm doing my job. Um, which is great. Um, and I love the participation tonight. I think that's excellent. One thing I would recommend, Jeff, is if you have a an opportunity to attend the uh meeting that we've all uh that we've been invited to. Jeff, I think that this would probably help you even understand it more um than than you do, which is great. And that's the whole purpose of this. Uh, that was I'm sorry, it was at uh kiddies October October one at six thirty. Um, I think the more information we gather as a community, the better off we'll all be when we try to make this decision together. So I do appreciate you trying to drive me in. Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff. Go ahead.
We work within seven Park Street.
Excellent.
Um, I think to, there's been a lot of discussion about the town being sued if we say no. I believe, I can't be for wrong, somebody, um with Milton, what makes them so different? Because many towns are saying no. They've seen several towns who voted early and the residents are off good arms like Andover, saying, we never knew what we were voting for. And they're now very unhappy about it. But a two-thirds vote is difficult to find to overturn it. I think that was Milton's issue. They did vote for it. But then realizing, oh, this is terrible. This isn't going to work for us, especially in this particular location that was quote chosen. Um, they're up in arms. And so they voted. They got the two thirds vote devoted that down. And that's when the state.
I didn't know that.
No, 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 no. Now that I heard, you know, months ago. So and I can't even tell you where I heard it, where I read it. Um. But I believe that's why they're in such hot water. In the meantime, many towns have voted it down, including our neighbors in Middleton. Um. And there are several, like like Jeff said, that are postponing it to twenty twenty-five, even though their deadline is the same as ours. They're willing to take the chance that they're going to not be in compliance, but they need to. And and I thank so much, Mr. Reddick, because every time I've heard you speak, you're saying this should be the the public needs to know what this entails and it shouldn't just be appointed or selected people um to make that decision for the town. So thank you for pursuing it for so many months. Um. So I think when the gentleman had called in, um, the legal costs, if we voted this down in October, it doesn't mean that the state's going to sue us and we're going to have all these legal costs. Um, so I just don't want people to think that that's what would happen. Um. And some of the towns who have approved it have said with regard to the grants, they're certainly not forthcoming and they're not as much as we were led to believe. So um, and I think I had heard that there's two of them where our um in in North Reading, wouldn't, we wouldn't, they wouldn't comply. I mean, we we don't
qualify.
Qualify. Um, because our our income is too high in a general sense. So um it was a third point on it, but I think the reason why there's so many towns who are now looking into it because we've heard of those eighty-three or so towns and cities that have that are saying, okay, we'll go for this. And they've heard the nightmares. And so now more and more towns are saying, whoa, wait a minute. Um. And that's where you're getting more of that pushback a little bit. But I, to my knowledge, any town that has said no has not been sued. I think Milton is, and many people, too, are waiting to see what happens with Milton before they actually take a vote. And I think that's probably, I'm assuming, I don't know for sure, that could be a reason why Hamilton decided to push it out as far as they can.
Thank you, Greg. Daniel?
I can see a a hand raised on the Zoom.
Great. Great.
Go ahead. Dan Mills, five Green Minno Drive. Um. So I'm glad this discussion was taking place in this depth of uh information and discussion. Um, certainly is a um a hot topic. Um, and sometimes I think we lose sight that, you know, even though the discussion takes place in this meeting here to this detail, a lot of different misinformation gets discussed at town meeting. So actually, I wish that there was more people involved with this particular meeting. Um, because it's easy to um lose the details at a town meeting. Nevertheless, nevertheless, um, you know, we're here discussing this. Um. I had a um a thought that we could simply include a cap of seven hundred and fifty units, the um number that we need to meet um the state's requirements uh included into the uh zoning amendment. So what that does is it limits the units. We're at nine hundred and six or nine hundred and eight right now on the two prop, two parcels. That would limit, that would really dissentifies a developer from going in and knocking down, taking out, you know, a hundred and fifty units out of its uh inventory. Um. The only concern I have is because of the, I'm not, I'm not sure. I'd like to see actually a raise of hands of the board. How many people, how many board members have actually read the entire um the entire act? And I cannot see.
All of them.
All of them have read it. Okay. So, um. There was one concern of mine is that it doesn't address inboard bedrooms. And that's basically if you're on a cruise ship, it's an interior cabin. So that that's not addressed in this um in this in this act. And I think it's sort of done on purpose. I think it could allow inboard bedrooms that don't have any windows, exterior windows. So I'm a little concerned, even though with my recommendation to limit the units to seven hundred and fifty, doesn't necessarily limit the number of bedrooms that can be created within those seven hundred and fifty units. So I was looking to see if the um council had any um any insight onto inboard bedrooms.
That's a good one, Dan.
Yeah, good question.
Yeah, let's agree. Well, we, on the June sixth meeting, we discussed the minimum size of the bedroom and the requirements so that we understood, you know, what that means in a larger unit, how it could be solidated or or added on to have more bedrooms, but we have not touched on that one. A good, good question. You know? Thank you, Dean. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Don't know. I just wanted to provide a little verification on Milton's situation by Ellen. Um, the reason Milton you can't get into the AG's mind, but the reason I think Milton was um made the subject of this lawsuit was Milton's stated compliance was one year prior. A lot of these towns, they're sort of North Reading and North Ranks. So Milton was out of compliance at the beginning of this year. And it's correct that the uh town meeting at Milton did pass a bylaw that would comply. Um, however, Milton's charter has a provision that allows acts of town meeting to be submitted to a referendum of voters. That you have to petition to have that done, voters petition to have that done. It goes on a ballot. And voters vote, and at the vote that was reversed. So it went to the ballot town meeting.
So it went to the ballot. Town meeting passed it, went to the ballot, was reversed. That's why Milton then was definitively out of compliance. While the AG chose them. I don't know, maybe they were the only one out of compliance at that point.
What's interesting is they.
That would have been their date, their.
They were like us, so Holden just didn't, they didn't sue you at all. Very first one to just before Milton.
Yeah, it was before, they were the first, Holden was the first one to say no. And Holden was very similar to North Reading. They don't have transit in their town anywhere. Their closest one's like two and a half miles away. It's almost, it's somewhat of a cookie kind of situation, what Holden is going through. And what our town is looking at as well. They're very, very similar as far as demographics and all that stuff. So yeah, you're you're right about that, Dave, yeah.
Just have one question. Still seeing two hundred miles landing. I understand that Edgewood only has one owner. So the other people there are not eligible to vote at the meeting. Are they notified that they can't vote? Because it, because it's a big impact too on them. That one, they could vote.
Any resident town can vote.
Okay, and where's the signatures?
Anybody?
Dick Matolo, two eighty miles landing. This nineteen pages from your executive office of housing and livable communities. Is is quite clear. I'm not a lawyer, but it's, it is nothing iffy about it. It's for increased density. It's got to be family friendly. In my mind, you might as well throw out Chicago docks. Because this executive office of livable communities, they're going to rule. And they're going to tell you, even if you do go in there. They can change the rules as they go, and we all know how regulators or regulations go. And they could increase the requirements for not threading three, four years down the road, want more units. It's very unfair to Martin's Landing and the seniors. Edgewood, that's different. By own Edgewood, I'd say this could be a real opportunity. It'd be a minimum. I think it should be pushed off and let's let it play out in the courts. They did not, as I understand it, I go by the Administrative Procedures Act. When they enacted some of this, do the hearings and the financial assessments and that. At two years, five years and all in that. It definitely would change Martin's Landing. In my reading of things, I could take my two bedroom. And I could make a four bedroom out of it, and I could rent it to college students. I could rent it to families. I could make a few bucks and move on. But but it's not fair. And so. If you still think it's a good idea, why don't we take Martin's Landing out of this? Keep Edgewood in, pick another part of town and put that in. Bump that up, take Martin's Landing out. Because, you know, there's no such thing as as over fifty-five restrictions once this goes in. And that is, we all get to a point in our life where we're looking for particular accommodations. And I think we deserve them. We pay taxes a lot of years and. You know, and this definitely will change the character of the town. It'll increase your needs for police, schools, whatever. And I think it's good that we're having these discussions because there's a lot to consider.
Thank you.
Jeff, you again. I just wanted to get a clarification. I think Jeff Gannon brought up an idea that. Cap it at seven hundred and fifty.
That was Dan.
Yeah, Dan, I'm sorry, sorry, Jeff. And then they can cap it, but I thought seven hundred and fifty is a minimum. And that you can add, get up to what, nine hundred and four, is that not?
I think you're raising, I'm not sure this big, the council or Danielle knowing that that one's better, but I'm not sure if we can cap, can we? Can you cap? I don't know if that's, that would kind of be counter to the law. You know, it's got the fifteen per acre, you know, fifteen units per acre. How could you then cap it?
You know, the purpose of the law through the guidelines is to set a minimum essentially. So if they proposed by law, I don't know the numbers, Danielle, we know the numbers. I assume that this was, this bylaw was. So that it would meet those guidelines, so that you would have capacity, the necessary requirements. But you cap it beyond that, I don't see why you couldn't. But it's the minimum capacity in this that's the concern of the guidelines. And I assume that you picked that increase in with stories. So that you would meet that capacity. There's a calculable, you put the experience into and assume that's how it came out, but. Danielle could address that better than I could.
Yeah, I don't know if we could cap. I just don't know about that.
I mean, it's interesting because in the calculator that the state provides, they ask you if you cap it. And so that goes into their calculation of how many units this could yield if redeveloped. But that said, I don't know what kinds of complications are introduced. If you put that into a zoning by law. If it was something you wanted to add in, I suppose, put it in. And if it got stripped down, that then it would, then it was. I have to assume it's an option. I don't know how, but I imagine I could put it.
It it doesn't, capping though, doesn't remove the problem that have the the residents of Martin's Landing have all raised though. You know, so.
A difference.
But is it a question like, again, in the effort, again, here to try to answer every question and then get an honest answer? Is it worth maybe wondering, you know, if you could find out that Danielle? Just if there is the ability to do any caps, which is maybe helpful, probably know that, just answer. One of the president's questions.
Answer, yes. I think that in the compliance model, there is a space to ask us whether we cap it. Doesn't, it doesn't knock it out of qualification. I think the total yield that we had in our calculator after this bylaw, the stories raised to four and a half. I think it was seven eighty or seven eighty-five. And that was only because the zoning, exactly as written, only yielded seven thirty-five. That's why the extra story, you know, was. But if the state has offered in their calculator the opportunity to put in whether or not there's a cap and we entered a cap of, you know, seven eighty or. You know, whatever your capacity was, I don't see the harm in putting that in.
Something to think about. Anybody else? Is anyone?
Irene Yule, three seven Park Street again. So I guess here's a question. So because this has also been batted around. Because the zoning laws that we're going to be asked to vote on at town meeting. Says that the zoning law would change for North Reading. That's the whole town. It doesn't say just for Martin's Landing, that initial one. It says, I don't have the exact wording in front of me, but it says to change the zoning laws for North Reading. And it would, you know, turn over to the three eight act. So if at town meeting, it gets voted down. Does that mean, given if we? Now, if, I guess, does that mean that the state could come back again and say, because it could, you know, we're fortunate to have one big lot of fifty acres. You know, as I'm saying, and. But couldn't it be ten lots of five acres each? Or I know one has to be at least twenty-five acres, but couldn't they then come back and? Maybe they'll settle for, you know, like five, ten acre lots or, you know. As long as it's like fifteen, family friendly, no age restriction housing per acre. What if kiddies were to sell? And I use that because it's a large lot, the parking lot's huge. Could they then say, well, designate that and that would be a great location for portable housing, family friendly housing? So could could the state come back and ask us for like several lots of five to ten acres each?
I don't.
That's the fear, but that's the fear in the town. So that's a question that I think we have to try to find out some time.
So I think. Mrs. Yule, I think that what you're asking is if this is a no vote, after the no vote. If that were to happen in October, is this all going to be revisited in a different light after that? Is that what you're asking?
Right.
Okay, that's scary.
Otherwise, wouldn't, wouldn't we just be asked to change our zoning laws to just get that fifty acres on Route sixty-two? Right? And 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 not. I mean, I I just do because the whole, the whole point is to increase density in the suburbs. And to Mr. Redlock's point, if. If if we're being told by some that nothing will change. It's hard to believe that nothing will change for Martin's Landing when that's their whole purpose. And they've got, if you read the state law, it does say family friendly housing, no age restrictions. So Martin's Landing does have one building that's almost built. Has twenty-six units already sold, but there's still one building that hasn't even really started yet. And. They could say, this is what we want to do with that one and start there. But this will evolve into something that. I don't think we want.
Yep. So I I understand what you're saying. And the whole point that I have tried to draw out for this town to understand is it's complicated. There are a lot of moving parts. We need to understand it. Here we are, we're very, very close to making decisions as a town. And even today, we are presenting more questions. We have council, we have Mr. Roberto. And we're still not getting answered questions. And it makes it very difficult for a town to commit to something. That they don't have all the answers for. And I can tell you this. Not to bring it up, but when we went through the water storm project, sorry. No, but when we went through that, that was horrible. That was horrible for this town. And there was, it just so many people are in different places and. You're hearing like so many different things. So this is great that, you know, questions like that come out. Because that just affirms to me personally, take that camp. When I hear questions like that, I become very concerned for the citizens. And I want to know that, hey, you know what? Here it is. This is what they said. This is exactly what your answer is. And let's make a decision on it. And there's so much of that, even now. That we just haven't been able to lock down. And and I think we've done a pretty good job of helping the community understand. But we still don't understand it. Even council, yeah, even council, he's been gracious and he's sharing everything he can. And and some, even his answers are are not exactly direct. And so so it becomes difficult. It really does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Sure. Danielle, anybody online you've seen?
Dan, is your hand backup or okay?
Yeah, no, it's it's backup if I could, take a few more minutes.
Sorry, Paul.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Sure. So, you know, the state, if you do ask them in press, is you is usually pretty good at providing guidance or information. In this case, it seems like they're not forthcoming, or maybe we're not asking the right people. Or bringing it to the right legislation to. You know, really get answers for these. I mean, there there are folks that work that have made this decision. To either have something included to interpret it. How do they specifically interpret it? We're asking ourselves, we're asking our council, we're asking other communities. Why aren't we asking the legislation and or the agencies that are enforcing this? These specific questions. Why aren't we, why are we taking? Why are we doing this amongst ourselves and coming up with more questions? And, you know, coming up with wrong answers or, you know, different opinions? Why aren't we going right to the source and demanding answers for these very important questions?
That's a fair, that's a fair question. We we were fortunate to have Bruce Starr and Brad Jones with us at the joint meeting last week on Monday. And if, I don't know, I I wasn't aware they were going to be in the meeting. I might have come prepared with a few more questions for them. But I think you're spot on, Dan. I mean, they should be able to answer some of these questions on the statute, but go ahead, one.
John, in in the paperwork that you that Danielle forwarded to us for for Milton. There was, there was a person who said they are the administrator of this whole process. What was the person's name? Can you remember? He included a letter there that was in that.
So Chris Question from HLC. Chris Question from HLC.
Yes, yeah. So she's the administrator of this whole project? Wouldn't that be a place to start?
Sure.
And that's your answer.
We should probably get a list of questions out to.
I read that whole thing.
Okay. Thanks, Dan.
One follow up question too. I think, remember, Griffin. You had mentioned this several times the past meetings about a project in Cambridge that you were using as an example of potential outcomes. Do you have a site that or a project name or address that you are referring to this project?
Yeah, so Dan, I did get your email on that and I did respond to you. And at this point, we're waiting, I believe, Dan, now to meet with FinCom because there's going to be a lot of questions asked.
So so this is outside of FinCom. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a resident asking the question at this point. You had brought it up at several meetings, this particular project in Cambridge. And I just, I just want to, I want to just understand that, you know, I'm not accusing you of fear mongering, but maybe I am. Because you brought it up at several meetings and I did reach out. And I just want to understand that that development better. So I can, and I just, the the. The pause that you're giving me on this, you know. Pushes me more in the direction.
Stan, I've asked for meetings with FinCom a number of times. And I have gotten, I have not gotten a date to meet with you guys. I've been looking and outreach to FinCom. Ever since we had a town meeting on June sixth. I thought it was important for the CPC to meet with FinCom and discuss and go over some of the. Some of the views that we have had, some of the things that we have seen by other council. And you know what, Dan? I highly recommend also to, that you also consider attending the the event that Mr. Yule has invited us to. I I think it's important that we we all collectively try to get a grab on this. So again, I I've made multiple attempts, sir, to 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 meet with FinCom and and I've not yet gotten a date to.
Mr. Chair, if I may, with with all due respect, it has nothing to do with FinCom. This is a, this is a, I'm a resident asking a question to the Community Planning Commission. It's outside of FinCom. It's it's. I've attended, and as you know, I've attended several of these meetings, probably one of the. One of the faces you see most on this topic at your your hearings. So again, you you must be familiar with the project in Cambridge that I'm asking about at this point. You brought it up at several several meetings, just looking, just looking for the address, if if I may.
Yeah, why don't we do this though, Dan? Because we have a room full of people and all online, but why don't we just take that offline? I'll have, I'll have Mr. Griffin contact you and give you that information.
So that would be.
Okay.
Okay, fair enough, Mr. Chair.
I appreciate your your feedback too, Dan, on the, especially on the asking questions over like people. You know, HLC. So thank you. And then Paul, sorry about that. You've been very patient. Go ahead.
You know, I think, I think I'd like to know, what is the? Where's this come from? So so we're dealing with MBTA, right? That's our partner. So, so we're dealing with MBTA, right? That's our partner here.
Uh, no, there, this, this is just a proximity kind of, uh,
Are we only directing the state then?
Yes.
Are we only directing the state?
Yes, this is.
So no, no proxies. That's our feeling on that.
Yeah, this is not, no longer really.
Well, in answer to, to, what was his name? Dan? That person just speaking?
Dan.
Dan.
And else.
Um, I don't think the state wants to give us the information. And so, um,
Well, let's find out.
Yeah.
To be fair.
I mean, you think about it, every time they want to put people in here. So they want to bring the, what, 1500 families to the North Reading, somewhere around there. And then Somerville and Cambridge, you know, say it's 800 or whatever. So when you, when you, when you add them all up, you've got a million people. 500,000, I don't know. You know, where are they getting all these people?
I mean, it's a good question. We have a net negative leaving the state, so I don't understand. I'm a math guy.
Yeah. Where are they getting these people?
Yeah.
And are they, are they subsidizing them? Are they guaranteeing their, their rent for the first year? Do they come to the homeowner and say, listen, we'll, we'll guarantee the rent the first year, the first three years? Or do they, do they want them to go through a bank, like a little college loan? You go to a bank and they, and the, the, the government would, would back the bank?
I mean, we are raising a lot of different issues that aren't necessarily associated with this, this law, but these are housing initiatives and things that are definitely part of the new law.
Right. But when they break, break down, the state doesn't want people sitting on their doorstep and nowhere to go.
Right. Yeah, they get a question.
So what are they going to do then, you know?
Yeah.
So I mean, who are these people? Are these, are these people that, that are some, some are coming from different countries? Are they citizens?
We don't.
Are they not citizens? I don't, I don't even know if I'm allowed to ask that question. You know? But they got to come from somewhere. It must be a burden on the state to have to come out and, and to change everyone's bylaw.
I think everyone, everyone in this room understands this, you know, every state is being challenged right now. Um, doesn't matter what, what, you know, political side of the aisle you're on there. You know, democratic land states, states that are overwhelmed right now and waving their white flag, Marilla's waving the white flag. Everyone is a little inundated from this 15 million, you know, migrant surge in the last four years. So it's a problem for everyone. So, um, but it's not addressed in this law. So I think we're going to stop everybody here. We, we need to kind of move on and you know, we're just talking about the law.
Kamala Harris said she, she's going to build 300,000 homes. So why don't we just contact her?
She's a good builder. So, Paul, I appreciate it. Yes. Let's try to wrap it up too, unless you have questions. I don't want to stop anything, but we definitely have business tonight.
Try to keep this, not a good question here. I'm just trying to follow one, something here. Um, you know, as a former select, I've always found it very important that the school committees, CPC, Select Board, and FinCom work together. I always felt that that was a very key, uh, mechanism to success for this town. Okay. Now, right now, I'm not a, I'm not a state, I'm just a regular citizen. Now, we have on Zoom, we have two representatives from FinCom. And one of them, Dan, in this case, is asking for documentation. Jeff, Mr. Griffin has been attempting to have meetings with, and this is strictly from the citizen perspective. Okay. Mr. Griffin is trying to get a meeting with him. He can share that document with him at the meeting with everybody being present and being able to give some context to what he's presenting, rather than giving it to a supposedly private citizen that he can get himself, read for himself, and that's great. Okay? And, and, but if, if you're going to do it as a private citizen, then what you're really saying is you're not going to share it with FinCom. Because you're doing this as a private citizen. So, and I don't think you would do that. I would, I would share it too. So, so it's important for these, uh, uh, for FinCom, Select Board, CPC, the School Committee, work together rather than try to take away to get information.
Yeah.
Okay. So, um, in order to move forward successfully for the town, this must happen and must continue to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
I see a question.
Break behind you. Just very, very, yeah, bridge longer. Jeff, same here, we're sorry.
Just remind the town, there is another public hearing on Mondays, Sunday. So we have a chance to go through this again. You should be right.
Thank you, Richard. Thanks for coming too.
Yeah.
Thank you. And Danielle?
I'll read the question, the comment, um, from Marilla already. If the state is compelling each community to accept this state zoning law by inserting the word, quote, shall be adopted, then what is the point of having any community vote on the MBTA slash 3A Act at all? Is it merely to make those communities who reject it ineligible for specific grants?
No, I'm giving mine. Review, Mr. Jerry, yeah, that's the question. Um, the state chose, the legislature chose this avenue of increasing housing, multifamily housing in the state. They could have chosen a different avenue. They may yet choose a different avenue. This is the one they chose now. Um, to the question, apparently, you know, could they have just said, shall we adopt it? They could have just said multifamily housing shall be allowed upright in the town. They've done that with other uses. They did do that here. They gave the town the opportunity to pick where that multifamily building could be in place. But because the word shall be adopted and said there, it's created some questions about, well, how can they order a town legislature to do something? That's one of the questions for the court. Um, and the simple answer to that is shall simply means you shall, if you want access to these grants. That's the simple. That's kind of the harder answer is, is the AG says, no, that's not the end of the story. We can order you to do it. We needed somebody to impose something. And just to be clear, that's one of the things that the AG has asked for is, and that was mentioned earlier. If, if, yes, if he agrees that these guidelines are in place, the act can be enforced as is. The AG, one of the beliefs, one of the types of beliefs the AG has asked for is if the town refuses to adopt zoning that's compliant, to impose zoning upon the town. That has not been done, but it is one of the things they've asked for. So it's a potential for a leak. It's a potential leak if you're not in compliance.
Um, I think, uh, if that's, if the comments, I'll close airing. Uh, I think we had some of, or we have, um, the ability to vote tonight, but my opinion, um, as a chair is in, in being also consistent with how we've been doing this so far is we want to, um, you know, push that off until the very last moment that we can, which for us is right before the town meeting. Um, that's how we've done it. I also think, um, we're in keeping with, um, you know, 60% of the 177 towns. Um, only 73 have voted on this, um, and that's 41%. So we're in the majority by, by holding off. And I think as Chuck alluded to a little bit on the sewer water projects, this product, this one, at least when it comes to October, and we finally vote on it, no matter where it goes, no one's going to say that we rushed into this, you know? Um, and so I'm, I'm kind of proud of that actually. And I know some of you might be on the different side of this issue with me, but, um, I appreciate and this is what, this is what democracy is supposed to be, is people listening to people getting both sides and coming up, um, and voting in the majority. So Jeff?
That, that was a great ending to this.
I just wanted to end it.
I have just one, one quick, um, um, question. Um, so it's 13, 14, and 15 in the articles. Is that correct, Danielle? Okay. And on all three of those articles, are they identified as associated, associated with the MBTA law?
No, no, and that's, that's our doing. Um, so we received the, um, the articles back in, uh, well, we, we they're the same ones really back in from June, but we, we revoted them on via the Zoom call to put this back on the, uh, October meeting as promised. And we did not pick up that they don't have an identifier in them, unlike all the other towns and just all the neighboring towns that I can name off right now, but I won't waste your time. Who have, who have them on their, um, warrant and they all say very clearly MBTA, um, Community Act. So, um, we didn't do that. So what Mike was kind enough to do, because we notified, we, we, we were told, I was notified of that. I said, oh, you're right. And then let Mike and Danielle know. And we put that in the table of contents. So in the, um, the town warrant, um, what's it called, publication, um, in the table of contents, it clearly says 13, 14, 15 are the, and you do that. So they're doing the best they can. I think some things went to print. I think it's our job to make sure people understand what they're voting for. We're certainly, I think at the town meeting, we'll be, um, presenting, I think, or, or giving our, um, you know, um, report, I think it's called. So, um, we'll, we'll be aware, um, that are on the floor. So hopefully that helps Jeff.
Let's see your question. Any, anything else? All right. That we're done. I appreciate everybody coming. We have one last thing on our agenda tonight, which is the, uh, 209, 211 Main Street Site Plan Review. See, Lou. Is the tool. Thank you. Doggy Dave here. Right? Oh, we love dogs. Hello. Just sit through that.
Yeah.
Wasn't that fun? I, I said something to Danielle at the beginning. I'm like, oh, poor, poor Main Street is going to be at the end.
How did we get stuck?
It's Danielle schedules them as they come in. So just know. Bye, Paul. Thank you for coming.
Lauren just stepped out. And goes, yeah, I'm just, you know, it's boring, stepped out. That's okay. Can you wait even more?
No, we didn't. We finally, uh, sent us an email that he finally looks back and he sort of checked out.
Have you seen it?
No, but, uh, he did send Danielle and I. Then Paul is Jerry.
Okay.
Served them again.
Yeah, because I saw the address. Like, wait, that's great. Somebody in there.
Yeah, you waited all the year.
For me, finally.
It was last year.
It was.
And we were going to write a whole year. The fence, the fence, like, yeah, I was telling Jeff because he didn't know.
It's all good. I don't see, I haven't seen it.
Have you seen it, Danielle?
It's what they said they would do. But.
Oh, not very fancy, but.
It's exactly what they said.
All right. So we do.
No, no, no.
Oh, yes. Just going to read the, uh, notice. Um, okay. Uh, notice is hereby given that the North Reading Community Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 7th, 2024 in room 14 of the North Reading Town Hall and online at 8:30 PM on this application of Francine Coughlin, Callan, Trash Ganda LLC. The site plan, uh, review entitled Site Plan 209, 211 Main Street, Town of North Reading, dated July 19th, 2024. Property located to the, uh, 209, 211 Main Street, North Reading, Mass, um, map 14, parcels 122 and 123. All right. Okay. Uh, just state your name and, and, uh, your company or.
Certainly. Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Michael Newhouse. I'm counsel for the applicant with offices at 80 Main Street Wilmington. Uh, as, uh, has been referenced before the commission this evening for site plan review for the property at 209 and 211 Main Street. Uh, the applicant is, um, the principal of the company is Francine Coughlin. Uh, Ms. Coughlin is here tonight with, what I'll refer to as her business team. Um, also, uh, we have tonight Luke Roy from LJR Engineering and Joanna Rec, who is the architect for the project. Um, the site currently is used as a canine care facility. And the proposal is to, uh, raise one of the existing buildings, namely the one at 209 Main Street, uh, to eliminate the lot line and, and merge the two properties and to add on to the existing, uh, structure that is at, uh, 211 Main Street. So there's really no change at all to the, uh, use of the property. Uh, historically, 209 had been used for some auto repair, uh, and related businesses. Uh, but the, the only, uh, in, the sole and principal use that's proposed is for the canine care facility. Um, as, uh, the commission will note from the application, um, the project will not result in any new or increased non-conformities. Uh, there are a couple of, uh, pre-existing non-conformities in terms of zoning, uh, that will remain. Uh, but the right, the, the front yard setback will be conforming, the right sideline setback will be conforming. Uh, there will be no change or increase to the non-conforming setbacks to the rear of the site and to the left of the site as you stand on Main Street. Uh, the project also will include the abandonment of, uh, existing non-conforming septic systems and will include the, uh, installation of a new conforming septic system for the site. Uh, the team is in receipt of various comments and recommendations from administrative officials, including the town engineer, building commissioner, um, Ms. McKnight. Uh, so we're committed to answer and respond to those various comments. Uh, but in general, I think it's fair to say that, um, Mr. Roy and the applicant have, um, uh, taken steps to respond to each one of those comments. And we believe that, uh, the proposal that's before the commission is certainly worthy of, uh, of the commission's positive review.
Thanks, Michael. How, how long is, is the businessman?
Yeah. The dog, K9.
Francine, how long?
I've been there for eight years.
How many?
Eight.
Okay, it was eight years.
That's true. I know I've seen it. Time just flies. That's.
It does.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Great. Um, and I, I, uh, I guess I'll defer. I have some questions, but I'll just go to the in post the volume here. Warren, do you have any questions?
I know. I read this whole thing. I'm okay. I'm kind of okay with it.
Lauren, I mean, uh, Lauren, Max. Currently, no questions. Yeah. You know, at this time, I'm good. So the questions I have are more kind of with Jerry's because I think he's kind of picked up some of the ones that these are the ones that probably, um, Luke would, would be able to address too is, um, on the stacked spots on the left and right. Um, from what I understand is either they're not allowed or so there's two issues. One is he's, he's concerned that they don't work, you know? So that's, that's one issue. And the other is, are they even allowed? You know, so you know, Luke, you know, the, the bylaw probably better than I do. Even time as long as doing this.
So, yeah, I mean, I'm not aware of a specific requirement, regulation that prohibits them, but, um, I, I've run into that very often.
It's not that Jerry, I think Danielle and I had a conversation about it, or did we determine they weren't allowed or?
It's not that Jerry, I think Danielle and I had a conversation about it, where, and did we determine they weren't allowed, or. Because Jerry was not contending necessarily that they weren't allowed, he was contending that they weren't safe. Or they would, a car would get stuck, um, it was too close to, say, the roof lines, no, I mean, he had something like that to that effect.
I think his intent there was to identify that there are a number of things about the parking that would just require, uh, relief from the zoning board. And then I think he was giving his own commentary on what issues might be associated with having them spaces. Need to provide relief for, um, both the size of the spaces and for the configuration of those tandem spaces.
As in, of a tandem. Yeah, to allow, so maybe perhaps it isn't allowed, so that's, that's interesting. I mean, I, I can understand the, the challenge, it's like you have a limited frontage there. And you're trying to have people come drop off and pick up and everything like that, but it, it does. It is, it does seem a little tight there, and can you tell me too, because it's not. Evident, I should have probably just gone on Google Maps or something, but I'm just looking at the plan. But over on the left side, which I believe is the north side of the property where the, um, pylon sign is, or the sign is. It seems like it'd be very tough right there to get into that spot. And back up and everything, like, the sign looks so close to where the parking spot is, like, what is, do you know what the footage is behind that? Stall, and yet it's already a reduced stall, like it's Jerry pointed out.
Yeah, I mean, it, it is tight there, um. And I think it looks worse on paper than, than reality, it's hard to turn it in and out of that. Leftmost spot.
Like, is it open, is your neighbor, is it wide open and also paving right there? It's all, I'm looking just at a lot line, and it's not really showing, you know, so.
That's right.
Okay, is that them? Got it, okay.
We're not creating anything that's already, that's.
Yeah.
Already there.
Did you consider a drive-through at all, maybe?
That there is no, that there's no metered parking or, you know. Community parking lots in North Reading, so we are at, um, it's, it's more for, you know, employee parking and things like that. Not, not people in and out all day long.
Right.
That's sort of not how we operate, so.
Okay.
There's not a lot of concern about, you know, people backing in and out of the spot over and over again. It's not like Walmart, you know? It's very much, um, when they would pull in, and, and I think, you know, we, we discussed this too, it's like, one of those tandem spots is our van. We don't use it very often, um, so it, it's sort of just more of a place for our van to, to live.
On tandem, you're sitting?
Yes, so, um, and, you know, we can make sure that it's in working condition to the condition. If not, obviously, I have trouble, eh? Um, so, so things like that, I'm not, you know, super worried about, but, um, I did think. My attorney had said that there wasn't anything that he had seen in the bylaw about the tandem spots. Um.
Right, so, uh, Mr. Chairman. We, uh, first of all, in coming into tonight's meeting, we, um, anticipated that that. Could be a, a topic of discussion that would continue to be on this evening, and we're happy to do that. Um, I could not find in the bylaw any prohibition to the tandem parking. Uh, I was able to locate the, um, you know, the parking regulations in terms of the size, so. I could have missed it, but I could not find the prohibition.
If, and if we do, Danielle and I will certainly, you know, we'll email you, and just so you know. But I think that helps give context about, like, like you said, a van or, or something like that, um. So, um, I do think, you know, it's certainly for the Z B A to make that decision. But it helps us because we comment on the applications for Z B A, just to understand the context of how that would be used, you know? For, um, you know, hardship or relief. Um, the pylon sign or the sign or pedestal, whatever you call it, I mean, that's gonna stay, right, that's not. That's not changing, or like, at all? Are you coming up with a new sign or anything like that, the one that's right out of front?
The current plan is that that sign will remain.
Okay.
And then there'll be a, a building sign as well.
Yeah, it'll just go through the normal, you know, sign requirements.
But that was permanent, right?
Yeah, they were, I think they're all, um, essential.
A pile of time. Okay.
It's all been permitted.
If you have any questions. Okay. Yeah, and one, well, yeah, go ahead, because it's not that same subject.
No, well, actually, you're kind of combining the lots and making them into one lot. And that's something we tried to do on that side of the street for a while, actually, because the lots are so small.
There's some error.
No matter what happens in the future, this.
I think it's, it's one deed already, the way it is, right? It's, it's, it's been held in common ownership, but they have preserved the separate parcel, so, um. Certainly, it's, it's an added benefit to be able to have conforming frontage and to eliminate. That lot line and to fully merge them with the site.
How do you, how is the, I noticed there's a non-conforming either stair or something off into that paper road in the back. How is that handled? You know?
Well, it's, it's, it's been there so long historically, and from a practical standpoint. Um, we're hard pressed to conceive of any scenario where that paper street is going to be developed.
Right.
And from a safety standpoint, you really want to have that form of egress there.
Right.
So, uh, so the plan is to leave that there.
Got it, okay, I just, you're an attorney, you know. Um, the, uh, the other one is the, the bigger one, I see the infiltration, uh, units, um. So it looks like Jerry has, uh, an issue with that, only because you're in the aquifer protection zone. Um, it, he says the Z B A's, that doesn't have the expertise, so he's gonna just kick that out to, kind of, third-party review. Do you have any comments on that, or?
Yeah, I would, that was a little confusing to my, you know, because the, the intent with this is to. Provide some recharge on the site where there's currently, there's currently none, I mean, it was. Prior to the applicant taking ownership last August. Entirely impervious. Roof runoff right off, you know, out to Main Street, and so with this, uh, project. They've already improved the site with removal of a large portion of the paved area. Um, and then also with the design is that. These infiltration trenches, it's not infiltration units, um, it's an infiltration trench that will receive. Run off clean roof runoff, so there's no, um, question as far as the aquifer with. The, the water that's being put and, and into the ground.
That's really great, not draining, really, right? I mean, that's all it really is.
Yeah, essentially, it's like, rather than having downspouts from the building that run right off to the pavement. It's being put into a, a stone trench and allowed to, to, uh, slowly drain. Off, and, and it's fairly decent soils there as far as infiltration goes, so, um. But I know the town, the town engineer reviewed the plan, and I think he understood what we're going for there, and seemed to think it was an improvement and had no issues with it, so. That's all we, we would hope that the board would look for, for the town engineer's input, and. Um, so I, I'm not sure exactly what the, what building commissioner was seeing in that.
I'm not either, but I, I think Jerry's pretty good about always, you know, being thorough about the review, so perhaps there's something that he's just wants to be answered again. Depending on, given that it's, or because that it's an aquifer protection district, so. I'm curious, did you have anything to do with the renovations right next door in the south, because didn't they do a bunch of. Similar type water quality units and things like that, so. Again, the same district, right?
Yeah, the dentist's office, and that was different in some respects because they cleared a. Significant area that was, that was wooded.
Yeah.
And, and a pervious surface that they converted to parking lot. And so that necessitated much more mitigation for the runoff. Where we had to do a subsurface like the chamber.
Yeah, they can burn all that.
Versus here, we're starting with a baseline of almost ninety-nine percent, you know?
Yeah.
Essentially all impervious, and so anything we do is an improvement, and that's how we approached it, especially being in the aquifer. At least if we do some infiltration of the roof runoff. It's not a lot, lot of opportunities for other stormwater measures, but, yeah, it's definitely an improvement, so I, it's definitely a little bit of a different category than, than next door because of that.
Thanks, Luke.
Yep.
That's all I have, and I see, you know, I see the nine by eighteen, you know, versus ten by twenty regs, so that's a Z B A guy too. Um, I don't have any other questions unless, again, going back to the team here in U S. So Danielle, do we, and we. Would we vote on this, or do we have to let Z B A? Or the other departments first complete any kind of review? Like, do we continue this? Because I don't want to make you guys, I don't want to just automatically continue to continue, but if we have to continue based on.
Oh, zoning relief is, um, supposed to be obtained prior to your making your decision.
Got it.
And I think there were a few outstanding items that we wanted to.
Right.
Completely wrap up, um.
Yeah, okay.
But I would recommend it.
Okay, so if you guys agree with that, um, I think it's the next meeting, I think you have that, um.
Motion for, for a time, though, um, I'm just curious, Danielle, on the first, on October first. Can you guys agree, because you sat through a lot of stuff.
We can get.
And I don't want to do, I don't want to do that again. Um, these guys, if there's something that's more pressing first for that schedule, so we can get them in, maybe at an earlier time.
Sure. Do you want, normally we start the first public hearing at eight, but we can do it at seven thirty, right, when the meeting starts, it's up to you.
Yeah, let's do seven thirty.
That way, then we can move them, you know, open them up. They don't have to sit around.
Been tortured. So, it's the first thing, time?
October first?
Yeah, October first.
Uh, yeah. That's what it says.
That's it, it's on there in the motion.
We got, the time has to be, um. What, seven thirty?
Yeah, yeah.
What, seven thirty?
Yeah, because this on October first at six thirty was meeting.
This one?
No, the one, Jeff, you will.
Oh, that's on October first? Is it? I have no idea, where's that thing?
October first at six thirty P M.
We're gonna have to make it real quick here.
That's all I was trying to do, is make you realize what you're doing.
I was trying to look at my calendar when it was.
I didn't miss it.
Yep, we got CPC, uh, well, you know, we gotta be there, so. Yeah, so, um, yeah, so seven thirty, so if you want to read the motion, then we'll just. Take care of that.
Sure, uh, I move that the Community Planning Commission vote to continue the public hearing for two oh nine, two eleven Main Street. Until October first, twenty twenty-four, seven thirty P M.
Thank you, I get a motion in a second, further discussion. None, all in favor? Yes, so, I'm very encouraged to see you guys, um, first.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Have a good night.
They do.
Yeah, that's good. Now we get an excuse.
I know.
All right, um, post-meeting, and Danielle, we good here?
I do have one. In more detail at a future meeting, but, um, we have been informed that. We participate as all town students in the National Flood Insurance Program, and FEMA will be updating our map panels. And part of that process, it usually happens every ten to fifteen years, it's, it's been quite a while, I think, since twenty twelve or twenty fourteen, since it was last done. Um, they are expected to release new maps this year, and in order to remain. Participants in the National Flood Insurance Program, we are required to adopt those panels. And the consequence of not doing that would be anyone in North Reading who has flood insurance, um, is at risk of losing their flood insurance, so we have to be very on top of it. Our expectation is that, um, we would have a revised zoning bylaw. We already do have it leveling, um, bylaw, but. There would be some required revisions, which happens every time this comes around, including the new map dates that would have to be adopted, um. The, the timing is a little tricky, because they expect, FEMA expects to release these, um. The notice about these new map panels in December or January, and you only have six months to act on them, to adopt them. So it, it's possible that if the timing doesn't work out well with our normal town meeting schedule in June, or a potential special meeting in January, then we. Could possibly be looking at another special town meeting just for us. I just want to make you aware that I'll keep you updated as soon as I know more, um, but it's, it's something.
Okay, so within six weeks, I need somebody to, okay? All right. That's it. Thank you, everybody.